Welcome to the Monday, November 11th, 2019, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. I will turn this over now to Lieutenant Dietrich.
Thank you. Madam President and attendees, would you please rise while we present the colors?
Welcome to our esteemed guests this evening, gentlemen, and thank you for being here, and Happy Veterans Day. We will, I will quickly make notice that the board met in executive session preceding this, preceding the beginning of this meeting. Everyone was present with the exception of Commissioner Clark, and we discussed matters of real estate, legal, and personnel. Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Does staff have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Anything, anyone from the public have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? All right. I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through G.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to nothing. All right. Do we have a video now? We are going to have a video.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I state your name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To defend.
To defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And to bear true faith.
And to bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
The orders of.
The orders of.
The President of the United States.
The President of the United States.
And the orders of.
And the orders of.
Those officers.
Those officers.
Appointed over me.
Appointed over me.
According to regulations.
According to regulations.
And the Uniform Code of Military Justice.
The Uniform Code of Military Justice.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We celebrate Veterans Day on the anniversary of the armistice that ended World War I, the armistice that began on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. The timing of this holiday is quite deliberate in terms of historical fact. But somehow, it always seems quite fitting to me that this day comes deep in autumn when the colors are muted and the day seem to invite contemplation. It is, in a way, an odd thing to honor those who died in defense of our country, in defense of us, in wars far away. The imagination plays a trick. We see these soldiers in our mind as old and wise, but most of them were boys when they died, and they gave up two lives, the one they were living and the one they would have lived. When they died, they gave up their chance to be husbands and fathers and grandfathers. They gave up their chance to be revered old men. They gave up everything for our country, for us, and all we can do is remember. "I will not fail thee nor forsake thee." In memory of those who gave the last full measure of devotion, may our efforts to achieve lasting peace gain strength. Let us make a vow to our dead. Let us show them by our actions that we understand what they died for. Strengthened by their courage, heartened by their value, and born by their memory, let us continue to stand for the ideals for which they lived and died.
In the long history of the world, only a few generations have been granted the role of defending freedom in its hour of maximum danger. I do not shrink from this responsibility, I welcome it. I do not believe that any of us would exchange places with any other people or any other generation. The energy, the faith, the devotion which we bring to this endeavor will light our country and all who serve it. We shall pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship, support any friend, oppose any foe, to assure the survival and the success of liberty.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ian, for making that video happen. All right. Now we will have, move on to Resolution 2019-114, Recognizing the Establishment of Veterans Day 100 Years Ago. Commissioner Nagel, will you join me? Well, I'd like to welcome you all being here this evening. Our, our two Legion posts, thank you, that's the word I'm looking for, Legion posts here in the representing Radnor-Wayne area. We are very grateful to have you here, and we are very grateful for your service. We are grateful for all that you give back to the community now and what you've given in the past. We are proud and excited to have you with us, and we are proud to represent our township in their gratitude to you all and for your service, and also to your families for letting them, allowing you to serve. So, Commissioner Nagel, I will read the resolution that we have, and we have two plaques acknowledging this, the 100th anniversary of the establishment of Veterans Day. Whereas Delaware County is home to 35,000 veterans who served our country with distinction and have become a powerful force in our nation, and whereas Radnor Township is the proud home of veterans who have answered the call of our nation to defend freedom from the American Revolutionary War through present-day conflicts in the Middle East, and whereas Veterans Day was first established as Armistice Day on November 11th, 1919, to celebrate the signing of the Armistice Agreement which ended World War I, and whereas Armistice Day became known as Veterans Day after the conclusion of World War II in 1947 in order to recognize all who served in the military, and whereas Radnor Township desires to celebrate and recognize our veterans on this Veterans Day Centennial. Now, therefore be hereby resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township does hereby recognize and celebrate this day as Veterans Day Centennial in appreciation for the service and sacrifice of our veterans and their families. So resolved at a duly convened meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township conducted on this 11th day of November 2019. So I need to get a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any Commissioner comment to the resolution on the floor? Any staff comment to the resolution on the floor? Is there any public comment to the resolution on the floor? All right. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-114, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to nothing. Gentlemen, please come up, and we'd like to present you with these, the resolutions signed in honor of today. We hope you can hang these in your posts. How about we get one of all of you guys together as soon as Marty gets it? Hey, can we get one of everyone all together? Do y'all want to come up? Let's have one of everyone all together. So I'd just like to acknowledge also our township staff, Mr. Zinkowski and Jennifer, who were very instrumental in making this happen today and making this recognition possible. So now I will, thanks Marty, thank you. Okay, I think we're going to move on to the next presentation.
Thank you very much. There's a resolution in front of the Board of Commissioners this evening to rename Veterans Park to Veterans First Responders Park. In 2013, the park name was changed to Veterans Park, honoring all of those who have served this country, and there had been a lot of conversation recently about another group of heroes, nothing that short, shortlives or shortcuts our veterans, to add the name First Responders to the park. I mean, at this time, I'd ask the Board to consider that resolution renaming Veterans Park to Veterans and First Responders Park.
Mr. Hart, do you want to call for the first and the second?
I wanted to, I wanted to come down because I was on the Parks and Recreation Board that recommended approval to rename the park from St. David's Park to Veterans Park. So, we had a good meeting at the American Legion, and we recommended renaming the park, and the Board at the time approved it. So, with that being said, thank you, President Borowski, with regard to the resolution on the floor, and with regard to renaming Veterans Park to Veterans and First Responders Park, is, is there a, is there, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So with that, I'd ask if there's any Commissioner comment on that?
I, no, I, I think it's a great thing. I think it honors everybody, and I'd like to say thank you to everybody for your service. Thank you.
And I'll follow that and want to thank all the veterans here in the audience today and watching on television for their service to the country. I will support the renaming of the park, but first, I am going to offer to table this and send it back to the planning committee, just because, once we, once we rename this, I feel this is a final decision, and this is, this is a plot of, this is a parcel of land that sits on Lancaster Avenue, and we've sat here and talked for months about lack of revenue coming into the township, and, you know, I think we need a Veterans Park. I mean, I'd like a Veterans, could it be Veterans Trail? Could it be, could we use the Front of Radnor Trail for Veterans Park? When I go past this park, it's, it seems underutilized to me, so, you know, I'd offer, I'd propose that we table this until we hear back and get recommendations from planning and other committees that have jurisdiction.
Second.
So we have a motion to table on the floor. Is there any discussion with regards to motion to table? All right. I will take a vote on the motion to table this. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails, the motion to table fails, five to two.
All right. I'm, I don't know where the, the new name for Lancaster Park came through for tonight, and I am 100% supporter of all of our first responders and appreciate the work that all of our first responders do, and want to appropriately recognize and honor first responders. But I disagree with doing that by changing the name of this today. On Veterans Day, I feel that this, it's, this seems to be, in my opinion, disrespectful of our veterans. We just saw a great video with our past presidents, including Ronald Reagan and others. First responders are great people who often put their lives on the line for others. They have, and they continue to sacrifice, sacrifice to do their jobs. However, their sacrifice is not equivalent to that of our veterans, who not only put their lives on the lines for all of us, but have also fought and sometimes gave their lives to stop those who would subjugate us and deprive us of our freedom. Many gave their last full measure devotion to the country, and their commitment and their sacrifice is not equivalent to the first responders, and on Veterans Day, it seems to me to be out of place. I would look to another place, another time, to name some other park or other, draw other attention and recognition to our first responders in another way, other than to do this on this evening. So that's my comments.
Hearing no further comments from the Commissioners, is there any comments from staff? Is there any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, oh, sorry, nope, go ahead. Nope, please, it's Veterans Day, you're sitting right there, you got to come up.
I'm going to get out of your way, Marty.
I just want to let everybody know that veterans and, I support veterans 100% every day of my life. My father taught me all there was to know about veterans, the flag, memorials, World War II vet, my hero, and I'll never forget him for that. However, being a veteran, I know what veterans do. Veterans and people in the military, they protect our borders, and we fight the wars of our nation, no matter where they are and no matter how long it takes. And sometimes the effects of war do go on forever with some of the servicemen that I have met through the years. However, when we come home and when we're away, who protects our community, our homes, our families, and our businesses? It's the firemen and women, the policemen and women, the first responders of this great country of ours. I am humbled by their presence every day. I work at a window, and I watch the police cars, and I watch the fire engines go by all the time. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, they protect us. If it wasn't for the men and women in blue, and the firemen, and the first responders, and we also have firewomen in this, this great community of ours, we would be a shell of what we are today. I have no fear of opening up at 4:30 in the morning or leaving my store at 8 o'clock at night, no fear at all. And a lot of communities in this county can't say that. So, yes, we fought in the wars of our nation, and yes, we protect the borders, the Coast Guard, and the National Guard. We do all these things, but we don't do what the policemen, the first responders, the firemen, we can't do what they do. And I know these men. My grandfather was a Radnor police officer, and every time they go out, they know this could be the last time, they come back to this, to this very room. The same thing with the firemen, all volunteers. Think about what they do. Think about, in the middle of the night, they just get up, go to the firehouse, jump on a truck, and go down and either help somebody who has been in a collision on the Blue Route, on Lancaster Pike, I saw a whole bunch of police officers on Aberdeen Avenue when I was coming here tonight, they come and help these people in their greatest time of need. I understand that some Commissioners here feel differently, and that's fine, that's what makes America great. You can say and do anything you want, you can have any opinion you want, but you have to respect those totally who protect our community, our homes, our families, and our businesses, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, without question. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marty, and so I would just like to add that I believe this was, the, the name of the park was suggested by the veterans, so, Rich, I'm sorry that that perhaps was not made clear to the Board prior to this presentation, but I guess we didn't think that this would be a controversial decision. So, I believe we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other comment with regards to the motion for Resolution 2019-115 to rename Veterans Park to Veterans and First Responders Park? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment, additional public comment? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-115, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, I'm sorry, six to one? Okay. Commissioner Clark, please, if you want to go back down, I think there's additional presenting, excuse me, Commissioner Booker, thank you very much, we have this under control, thank you. Thank you, we have it under control.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for your support on this issue here. It's always good to have our veterans back with us and front of us again. Since we started discussing this project, I think, beginning in 2013, and Commissioner Clark is there, there were a lot of meetings that were discussed, there were some conceptual ideas planned in 2014, since that time, we've been trying to raise money for that park. We know that times are tough in that, but I would like to say that tonight, there are some checks that are going to be donated here to the township for this specific park, honoring our veterans, honoring our first responders. So, without further ado, if Luke and Lisa can come here, Tammy, if you can come up, and then I'd like to ask Representatives from Penn Medicine to come forward.
This isn't the real check.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, I was just saying, wow, okay.
So just on behalf of Penn Medicine, oh, excuse me. On behalf of Penn Medicine, we're very proud to make this donation for $250,000 towards the development of this park, and we're very proud, member of the community, and we wish you the best in completing this project. So, congratulations, and with all due respect, everybody here, we're very happy to make this donation, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we need to get the veterans.
Yeah, absolutely.
Picture, right? By all means, you all should be up here, not us. By all means.
Thank you very much. At this time also too, we have our State of Pennsylvania Senator, Representative, Senator Daylon Leach, if you can come forward as well.
Good evening. We were also able to secure a grant for Veterans and First Responders Park in the amount of $25,000, and we thought, we come tonight, there's nothing more fitting than being here tonight for Veterans Day, and it is the least we can do, and so I hope this goes to make the park as beautiful as possible and something that everyone will enjoy. I also, I love the big checks, I pay my personal bills with these, without fail, but it's, you know, there you go. And how do we do this? My people want a picture, so it's, you guys can Photoshop me out later. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll just leave that there.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything.
Okay, so that, I think concludes, and I just want to thank, again, our township staff, and I know, so, Bob Zinkowski, and I know Tammy Cohen will be very much involved in making the, the improvements to the park. Luke, I'm sure you are excited about this, for your community to come, if you want to, for your award?
Thank you, you may be seated.
All right, thank you all very much. All right, moving along, we will have a presentation by the Wayne Business Association?
Request from Commissioner. Can we go back to the consent agenda and go through that Delaware Valley Health Trust issue, get an explanation of that?
It's that, we can bring that up in old business. Excellent point, Mr. Larkin, we'll bring that up in old business. Good evening, Mr. Todd.
Hello.
Thank you for being here.
No, thank you for having me. I was asked to come up and talk about the parking chair, the AT&amp;T Park Share money at this meeting, so I figured I'd come and share that, and at the same time, I'd like to have a presentation PowerPoint, I'm not that good at it.
Could you just quickly describe what that money is for us?
Yes. So, I guess back three or four years ago, we came to the conclusion with the township that the AT&amp;T lot revenue share, became the revenue share between the township and the WBA. So basically, half of the money minus the discounted parking money goes to the WBA, where we keep in, in a government, we just label it as a government grant account, and then we could spend that for improvements in the Wayne Business Overlay District. So over the years, we've been, basically about $13,000 to $14,000 a year come in, has come in, I should say, we've kept that money in the bank account. And yearly, we're supposed to come and tell the commissioners what we spent it on. So, last year, we spent $2,500 of that towards the Wayne Overlay, the WD Impact Study, okay? Which I think you've all read, I'm sure, page to page, past a couple of years ago. You can find it on the W website, at the wwaynebusiness.com if you're really interested. And other than that, we haven't spent it on anything, 'cause as we've known from the previous project, permanent improvements cost more than, or cost a lot of money, all right? But we're up to $54,000 now, and we do have some ideas, we've been shooting around between the board and residents and people that are interested, which I sent an email earlier today, and I'll share with everybody what we're thinking. But again, it's revenue sharing, so remember, if you are coming to Wayne and you park in the AT&amp;T or the Bellevue Park and Walk, part of that money is coming right back into the WBOD. So, this is another way that, you know, how the Redner Enhancement Trust could get grants and that kind of stuff and just make decisions easily, this is one way that we could actually helps bypass back and forths, although I'm gonna touch on that in a minute, between the township and the WBOD. But the money's safe and sound, a couple of things we're looking at is, just so everybody knows, when we talk about trees, that pine tree that we use for the, at the septic station basically, that we use for the tree lighting, well, it's, you know, a few years ago, Steve Schreiner said it's on its way out, Schreiner Tree Care, between Schreiner Tree Care and Keith Martin, they've always taken care of that tree, they light it every year, Steve takes care of that whole area, especially for the tree lighting. So we're looking to purchase, and there's a lot more work to go into it and research, but it looks like we could get a 25-foot live tree to replace it with, which is, will pale in size, or that'll be a lot smaller, but we'll figure that out. It'll be your generation's kids' tree to watch grow, okay? But it is, it's on its way out, so that's one thing, we might spend the money on. Another couple improvements we're looking at are redoing the, how do I say, the placards, the Luella Court Placard, and there's a, actually, we're talking to the Historic Society, there's a pole right outside of the Griffin Coffee Shop, it's been there forever, we've always wondered what it was, it used to be a marker, so we might actually put some money towards getting that refurbished, improvement, make it look good. Other than that, that's basically what the AT&amp;T Parking Revenue Share is all about. So, we spent $2,500 of it with that, just, you know, with economic study, Redner Township put $2,500 towards it, the Parking Revenue Share put $2,500, and the WBA put the $5,000, it was $9,500 total, whatever the math is. It's in the email, I forgot to print that up. Okay, so everybody contributed towards that. And with that one little study, I get to thank you guys and everybody for a huge project that's taken years, but really came into fruition the past year. And I gotta, I'm gonna point out one major thing here, is that the great thing about all the projects that just happened in the Wayne Business Overlay District, is that everybody on the commissioners, on the board, was in agreement, saw the need to invest in your town and in the business district in your town, mainly because the impact study showed how much taxes you get from it each year. Maybe that's one part of it. But it was great because, like, everybody agreed. We've talked, we talked to everybody individually, all the commissioners, everybody was on the same page, there wasn't any back and forth, it was great. And so, I think it's how township government should work, it was a nice, smooth process. It took years, don't get me wrong, and there was a year we lost about $170,000, just poofed out of nowhere for trees, so, but it's okay, we came back and got even more, that was, which was great. Spend the money when it's there, that's the key to anybody else looking out for money from the township. But yeah, I wanna thank, we gotta thank a lot of people. Some people disagree. Number one, Bob Zankowski, thanks for organizing this whole thing throughout the years and listening, providing a plan. Steve Norsini, great job, I mean, without this guy right here, nothing would've happened, organized, planned everything, and he has more up his sleeve, which I'm willing to ride the coattails on in the upcoming years, but I'd like to, I'm glad this project got done. Steve McNills, I know he's out right now, healing, but he really took care of Public Works, I mean, with, we had three things we asked for, cleaning up the corners, replanning the corners, he got that done quickly, which was nice. Keeping the town clean, I mean, these guys are out there in the mornings, cleaning up all the time, the complaints have really gone down. You know, one main, one other reason why this happened is because residents came to the WBA, was like, hey, we need a little freshen up in town, so, there is a history, about three years, I'll look back at my emails when we started doing this. John Hosback and Jonathan Alderson, the landscape architects, that really helped pick the trees, put where they're, decide where they're gonna go. And I will say, John Alderson has some great ideas for the upcoming, for new projects down the road, especially with trees and how the curb sides should be and all that kind of stuff. Some residents that had big to do with this, Reid Taylor, which is here with us today, lots to do, and he's still, I know you, I know he sends you emails all the time, which is great, but the residents really got involved in this project as well. Ken Currents, Matt Marshall, all from North Wayne. We need to thank Amy Fulton, who's a staff, or actually, the Senator Daleen Leach just left, and Jen O'Meara for helping get the North Wayne Avenue finished paving, they did that on Sunday night, looks great, so, it's all come together.
Daleen and Jen?
Yeah, hey, see? Sometimes, you know, everybody can work together to get stuff done in town, like I said. We're looking, oh yeah, we have emails and letters to prove it. The, we're looking for, I'm looking forward to watching the trees grow in the next 20, 25 years, I figure that's how much my body has left to cook. And, but I'm sure they're, they'll be here for years to come. I do wanna, this conversation won't start, I hope Damian and Moira are watching, I'm looking right at you, we'll be talking to you soon.
Oh, hey, you're back in the back, congratulations.
Chris, you can start lobbying them right away, you're sitting right there.
His daughter works for me, so I'm in, it's all good. The, we're not gonna stop, we'd like to see the progress keep flowing, I think spending a little money here and there is better, you know, keep on going. But long story short, thank you very much, commissioners, for making this project happen. Merchants are happy, residents are happy, the WBA's happy, and let's keep it going. So, I will, I am gonna invite Deanna Donough to touch on parking and small business, okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris, thank you very much. Hi, Deanna, how are you?
Hi, everybody. Deanna Donough, the Vice President of the Wayne Business Association. I know on the agenda that you had in the executive session, you talked about small business Saturday, but I wanna remind everybody that when you shop in Wayne, your tax dollars go back into your local area, so we really appreciate that, and we appreciate you guys approving the free parking Saturdays, which, to remind everybody, it starts on Saturday, November 30th, which is Small Business Saturday, and it goes through the December Saturdays for the shopping, holiday season, is what I'm trying to say, for all the local businesses. So we greatly appreciate the support, everyone coming into the restaurants, and our merchants really appreciate it, you know, we know how hard it is to be a local business and with the Amazon effect, and so it is greatly appreciated that you support the businesses in Wayne. Thanks.
Thank you, Deanna. So yes, everyone go shop, go shop in Wayne.
I think you meant the consent agenda rather than the executive session, right?
Yes, you did. We knew what she was talking about, Rich, thank you. Okay, anything else? You guys good? Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, I will call for public participation. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment this evening? Marty, good evening.
I would, I'm here with my fellow veteran and longtime helper with the Hometown Hero banners, and we have 12 or 13 to show you tonight that are gonna be put up within the next couple of weeks. We have, yes, we do. We have here Steve Dominic. Steve Dominic was in the United States Army in the Philippines, and his job was to repair the uniforms and the working gear of all the soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines who were, who were involved in that war. As you see, he has quite a few medals, and that's because he was, the Philippines were occupied at the time, and he went through a lot of, a lot of struggles, but he came home to open up a store, his store is where the Duncan Donuts is now, he was a tailor, and he spent all of his life in Redner Township, graduated from Redner High School in 1933. We have a couple of new banners this year, I talked to our township manager, Bob Zankowski, about this. We're gonna have Hometown Heroes and Hometown Legends, and there's a reason for that, some of the people, like our police and firemen, did not serve, and although this gentleman, Sam Holt, he did serve, he wanted to be recognized as a teacher and as a coach. Sam Holt, one of the greatest veterans I ever met, you can see, he was a teacher for 32 years at Redner High School, baseball coach for 12 years, basketball coach for 12 years, soccer coach for 31 years. We had, one of our first Hometown Hero banners was Larry Marshall, who was killed in action May 1st, 1968. Sam Holt had just got back from Vietnam when that occurred, and he started the Larry Marshall Soccer Award, which has been giving out ever since the year that Larry had died. And here, here's a gentleman who just passed a couple of months ago, Peter Sampson, he never served in the military. So I brought Peter Sampson's name to one of our post meetings the other day, and to let you know, the American Legion is based on four pillars, Americanism, rehabilitation of our veterans, a strong national defense, and children and youth, anything for the youth of this nation. And no one fits that description better than Peter Sampson, who for over 30 years, over 30 years, brought lacrosse to every child in this township. He wanted every child to have the opportunity to play lacrosse, and he donated his money and his time to make that happen. A true legend, and, and the people who knew him know exactly what we're talking about here. Here we have Don DeCarlo, police officer in Redner Township for 20 years, he was one of the coaches at Redner High School for 40-plus years, head football coach at Valley Forge Military Academy, and a Marine. He graduated from Redner High School in 62, and Flo DiNazio brought this to me, and her name will be mentioned in a minute. Here we have Mario Capelli, 3rd Class, storekeeper, 3rd Class, actually, a petty officer, 3rd Class, United States Navy, served bravely in the South Atlantic and came home to have a nice life. Now, the next two, Private Vincent Cronacio and Louis Direkow. Flo DiNazio came in and asked to have Don DeCarlo done, and she goes, can you do my two uncles? So she gave me these two pictures of these two men, and we did the Wall of Honor at Redner three or four years ago, and we never had pictures for these two Redner High School who were killed in action. So, about a month ago, I get a call, an email from a girl, a senior at George Washington University, she's looking for information on Vincent. Now where the heck did this come from? So I find out that her professor had brought her and the other students from George Washington University to Normandy, where these men are buried, pick out a soldier and research them. I had just finished Vincent's when this young girl's email arrived, and I was able to send her all the information. And if it wasn't for Bob Zankowski asking me to start this Hometown Hero project a couple of years ago, this young lady would've come up snake eyes on this particular soldier, who is a hero, buried at Normandy, and he was with the 513th Parish Division, and Louis, Flo DiNazio, also gave me his picture, he was a forgotten soldier, forgotten hero, he's also buried in that cemetery. And we have Corporal Nicholas Ricky, he went to Conestoga High School, but he married the tailor. Yeah, but he lived in Redner most of his life, and he is a soldier who was not...
Died last November.
Yeah, died, yeah. And Technical Sergeant Dominique Dometis, I knew this man my whole life, never talked about what he did in the war, he owned Dometis's restaurant right across from the Italian-American Club, and he later became Vice President of a bank and everything. But here's a man, never talked about what he did, he was a waist gunner in a B-25 Mitchell bomber, who flew countless missions over Italy, trying to wipe the Nazis out of Italy and get the war done, a true hero. Nobody in my generation knew him other than Mr. Dometis, but truly, graduated from Redner at 43, truly a hero. And we got Sergeant Armon Ponte, graduated from high school in 41, the same as my father, and same thing, if you notice the medals he has, five battle stars. He was in every major battle in... um, the tailor. Yeah, but, um, he lived in Radnor most of his life, and, um, he is a soldier who is not-
Died last November.
Yeah, died, yeah. And Technical Sergeant Dominic Dometis. I knew this man my whole life. Never talked about what he did in the war. He owned Dometis's restaurant right across from, uh, the Italian-American club, and, uh, he later became Vice President of a bank and everything. But here's a man, never talked about what he did. He was a waistgunner in a B-25 Mitchell bomber, who flew countless missions over Italy, trying to wipe the Nazis out of Italy and, and get the war done. A true hero. Nobody in my generation knew him other than Mr. Dometis, but truly graduated from Radnor, 43. Truly a, a hero. And we got Sergeant Arman Ponte, graduated from high school in 41, the same as my father, and, um, same thing, if you notice the medals he has, um, five battle stars. He was in every major battle in Europe, which is almost impossible, and survived, but he did it. And he was honored, he discharged in 1946. A true hero of Radnor Township. And then we have James Hennessy. He's the brother of former Police Chief Mo Hennessy. Uh, we put Mo Hennessy's banner up down in front of the park in Garrett Hill. Two hours later, I get a call from the Hennessys. Thank you, all this kind of stuff, yada, yada, yada. We've got more Hennessys to go up, and he will be down with his brother somewhere in Garrett Hill. We've got Technical Sergeant John Hospador, who served in World War II and in Korea. This little thing up here, he was another soldier who was in every battle with the 90th Division, the 90th Signal Corps in World War II. Uh, he also has five battle stars on his, on his, um, campaign ribbon. A true American hero. And last but not least, Robert D. Palantonio Jr., um, Vietnam veteran. And if you notice, he has air medals, and he has campaign medals, and battle ribbons, and citations from the President of the United States. He was a, um, he passed not too long ago. He was a real hero, and, um, his wife asked me to do this one for him, and, uh, I was honored. I just let, let, I want to let you know that each one of these takes me about two and a half hours, reading DD Form 214s, researching on the web where these men did and what the battles were. I had a veteran come in the other day, Bud Quinlan, and he wanted to know what I was doing, because I had a whole bunch of these out on the table. Said, "I'm spending my afternoons with heroes." I am a blessed man, and, and Bob, I can't thank you enough for asking me to do this. I, I didn't know how impactful it was going to be to the community. I have people come in every day talking about what they see as they walk around Wayne. You know, Wayne is a walking community, and most of these will be in the Wayne area and around parks, and people really, really appreciate it, and, and Bob, you're an inspiration to me, and I, I want to thank you so much for, for letting us do this. Oh, yeah. Mr. Blone, Mr. Blone, I, we, the relatives were at the memorial today, and we gave him all the, the banners, and, uh, he was a prisoner of war, and he's one of the guys that we talked about about a year ago, who was in the prisoner of war camp-
Johnny Calveres.
With John Calveres, and, you know, a couple of other Calvereses and guys who played football together at Radnor High School. So, it came time to move the prisoner of war camp, and you saw on the video what that's all about. So, Mr. Blone's feet were frozen, and he couldn't walk, and this is no disgrace. You can't leave somebody, you can't leave the enemy behind, so he was going to be shot. So, Mr. Calveres, who played football with Mr. Blone at Radnor High School, said, "I'll carry him." And he carried him for four or five-
Three, five days, 300 miles.
Carried his brother, carried his football companion, his classmate, 300 miles to save his life. And when we had one of the flag ceremonies a couple of years ago, it was the first time that the children of Mr. Blone and Mr. Calveres had ever met, for some, for some reason. And they went up to Mr. Calveres and said, "Wasn't for your brother, we wouldn't be here." But this, these are some of the things that we learn because of our gracious-
And at that-
Township manager. And without you, I wouldn't know these stories, and, and I wouldn't have the opportunity to bring these banners to the men and women of Radnor Township.
And talking about this guy, too, when they got liberated by General Patton's, uh, crew, and, and, uh, he found out his brother, Patsy, John Calveres's brother, Patsy, was in the same prisoner of war camp. Didn't know it because he was a, an officer, and they kept the officers, and he enlisted men separate, and they found out the day that they got liberated, the two brothers in the same camp.
Unlike Hogan Heroes, the officers did not bunk with the men. But that said, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to show you this continuance of honoring the hometown heroes of, of this, um, great and wonderful community of Radnor Township, and now the legends of Radnor Township. And, um, whoever you have in mind, just let us know, and we'll do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Marty, your, your work, your work's amazing. I mean, I, I don't know what else to say. It's amazing. I mean, you're, Bob, thank you for facilitating that, but your work's amazing. I mean, you, you give the credit to everybody else, but you, you do all of it, Marty. It's amazing. It really is.
No, I, I really want to say this. If it wasn't for Bob, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to spend my afternoons and evenings with these men and women. It's, it's, it's an incredible honor, and I'll do my best, and we'll do our best, to continue it and keep it going strong.
You, you've done, in my opinion, you've done everything you possibly can to make sure that these veterans are known and their legacies live on. Everything. I don't know what more you could do.
Well, I got your picture hanging, one of them. And, and you're, and the President put it on the, on the web on her Fourth Ward site.
Don't give me, I've done nothing. Don't give me-
But you look pretty good. I, I did, I, your dog wasn't in it, but next time, I'll make sure he is. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Thank you very, very much, and thank you for all the, all the hard work you're doing. Everything Commissioner Clark said is, is absolutely true. Any other additional public comment this evening? Please come up, and thank you for your patience. We really appreciate it.
Hi, Mary Coe, South Aberdeen Avenue, Wayne. Uh, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Skunk Hollow, uh, Skunk Hollow Community Garden. Uh, this is just a quick annual report to the board on the past season, uh, at the garden. We've recently concluded our eighth growing season, and are looking forward to the next already. This summer, the 40-plus families with plots at the garden grew everything from asparagus to zucchini, including some less conventional crops, like Malabar spinach, caulets, persimmons, and pawpaws, the latter being the largest Native American fruit and a favorite of George Washington. All of our crops are grown without chemical pesticides. We've gotten used to Swiss chard that looks more like Swiss cheese. This year, as in past years, we've gathered surplus vegetables from garden plots every Saturday morning and delivered them to Loaves and Fishes, which is a food pantry that's run out of the Prospect, uh, Hill Baptist Church in Prospect Park in Delaware County. The pantry serves more than 12,000 individuals a year and serves over 240,000 meals a year. For the summer of 2019, the garden donated just shy of $3,000 worth of fresh pesticide-free vegetables. Most Loaves and Fishes patrons don't have easy access to or cannot afford fresh produce, so our food donations are very much appreciated. Although the summer gardening season has concluded, our work has not. This year, also as in past years, we're collecting funds, funds from Skunk Holiday, uh, Skunk Hollow Community Gardeners and anyone else who cares to contribute to buy turkeys, hams, and canned vegetables for Loaves and Fishes, so that their patrons can enjoy a happy and nutritious Thanksgiving. Last year, we collected close to $1,000 for this effort. We are hoping to match that or exceed that amount this year. The garden will be holding its annual organizational meeting in late January or February to gear up for the 2020 growing season. Any Radnor residents who are interested in joining the garden should check us out on Facebook or at skunkhollowgarden.org. I would be seriously remiss if I did not mention the invaluable contributions of various schools and other groups who showed up this year on special volunteer days and performed all sorts of gardening tasks, such as pulling weeds and mulching in between garden beds. So, many thanks to the students at Villanova, the Haverford School, and Agnes Irwin, and to other volunteers. We'd be up to our eyeballs in Canada Thistle if it weren't for their efforts. Finally, everyone at Skunk Hollow Community Garden would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for its ongoing support for our award-winning garden. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary. That's impressive work you all are doing. Thank you. Good evening.
Before I start, I want to thank all of the veterans. I think that they already left, but, uh, I just want to thank them all for their service. Hello, my name is Ally Bauer, and I am one of the co-presidents of Action Earth, an environmental club at Radnor High School, and I'm a member of the Green Team. First, I would like to thank you all for your support so far for Ready for 100. I am here today with my co-president, Becca Zajak, and a few other high school student supporters from Radnor High School over there. Uh, to recap, Ready for 100 is asking for $40,000 out of a $30 million budget. To clarify, this is only 0.13 of a percent of the funds allotted to the Board of Commissioners for projects this year, uh, but we do understand that it is a lot of money. With these funds, we intend on hiring a professional energy planner to assess the township in efforts to establish a long-term plan for Radnor. I am here today because I am aware that if we continue to use our energy irresponsibly, we could face serious consequences. By making the transition to renewable energy, our township can lead the way to a more sustainable future. I want upcoming generations to be able to live without the burdens brought by climate change, and you have a say in this tonight. On behalf of Radnor High School, I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of Ready for 100. Thank you so much. Here's my friend, Becca Zajak.
Hello, everyone. I'm Becca Zajak, and I'd like to make a brief comment regarding Ready for 100. Ally and I came to the meeting here last year when the Ready for 100 initiative was passed. Since then, the Green Team has been working steadfast to continue the efforts of getting Radnor renewable. But to move ahead, we'll need the knowledge and expertise of a professional energy planner. You may be thinking, "Why is this important?" As you can see, several other high school students are here on a school night when we could be doing other things. Everybody from Radnor High School, please stand up, say hello. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for all being here.
We are here because we are the ones that will face the great impacts of climate change. I can't speak for everybody, but I know I'm afraid of the challenges extreme climate change will bring me from now into the rest of my life. By voting in favor of Radnor's Ready for 100, Ready for 100 resolution last year, you already proved that we're going in the right direction, but we can't stop there. To alleviate the fears that myself and others have, and to be less impacted long-term, the energy planner is essential. At the calculated cost of $1.50 per household, don't you think it's worth it? You are who we look up to to make change. In supporting this, you can prove to me, many other high school students here, and the rest of the community, that you care greatly about the future of Radnor. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all very much for being here. Any other public comment this evening? Please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Mooney, and I live at 500 East Lancaster Avenue, and I've lived in Radnor Township for about 30 years now. Um, so, I wanted to talk, uh, in support of the Ready for 100 initiative as well. And one of the things that, um, I wanted to, to say was that, uh, you know, we've been asked why, uh, we felt we needed to engage an energy planner. Well, that was our charge from, um, the EAS, and it is on Radnor Township letterhead, by the way. And, uh, it reads, um, "We expect the Green," oh, let me see. "The engagement of an energy planner and the planning process are expected to proceed over the next year, with a plan coming forward in time for adoption by Earth Day of 2020." We know that's an ambitious goal, but we still want to do that. And so, we looked at, uh, why do we need help, uh, planning? We want to shape a plan that's specific to Radnor Township. We don't want something that is generic. We want to improve energy conservation and efficiency. We think the emphasis on conservation of energy is, um, as important as energy efficiency. We want to determine our baseline energy use, because we want to know if and when we've made progress. I'm certain that we will make progress, but you only have one chance to establish your baseline. We want to target areas for improvement that will return, that will give us a high return on our investment and are readily attainable. We want to get agreement from stakeholders, and, um, we want to engage those key stakeholders, and we want to develop informational programs for the community. We reviewed proposals from four, uh, companies, and we chose the one that we are recommending because they have a great deal of experience in Delaware County. They've evaluated over 70 buildings in Delaware County to determine how they could be more energy efficient. They have evaluated 38 municipal buildings in Chester County. They have developed eight best practices for building energy management, and they have developed curriculum for high school and secondary education. And, uh, they will, they have provided support for grant proposals and utility incentive applications. So, energy conservation and energy efficiency is a very complex area, and we feel that we have picked the best, uh, the best company of the four who have submitted proposals to us. And we feel that, one thing is that their proposal was the most readable, and we feel that, uh, if they are able to communicate well to us, they will be able to communicate well to the, uh, to the other members of Radnor Township. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on, uh, to our committee reports. Item A, 501 Shadland Road waiver, uh, section 245, 22 dot A, to seat two of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. Mr. Norsini.
Sorry, I don't know if they're here. Uh, the applicant did, uh, the stormwater testing for infiltration for their property. They did not meet the township's requirements of 0.5 inches of infiltration per hour. Our ordinance requires the request of a waiver for this. This does not relieve them of other requirements of the grading permit and the review letter, as well as other items in the stormwater management, is solely for requiring the minimum, uh, water quality requirements of the Township Stormwater Management Ordinance.
Okay, um-
Steve, is the applicant, you said the applicant's here?
No, I don't see them, sir.
Should we table until they get here?
I, I don't see the need. I mean, if the, if the commission, if it so pleases the commissioner to do so, that's fine, but you could also vote.
Okay, um, so I will ask-
Let's, let's, uh, uh, let's move to, but table this until the applicant can, can be here. I think that he should, the applicant should be here to, to present, make his case. I mean-
Is there a second for the motion to table?
I'll second.
All right. Uh, any discussion on the, um, motion to table? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Steve, do you have a recommendation on this?
Commissioner, this, this is another one of those projects where, so, the applicant isn't saying, "I don't wish to do stormwater management." The applicant is saying, "I cannot meet your requirements. I'll do what I can, but I cannot meet your infiltration requirements." So, as opposed to somebody who would just come in and say, "I do not wish to do stormwater management" for whatever reason. So, in, in this instance, my recommendation would be to grant the waiver. They have no ability to meet our infiltration requirements. They physically cannot do it.
In the past, you've suggested that applicants who are in similar circumstances should be doing something to sort of meet the spirit of the ordinance, even if they can't comply with the letter, like maybe put in a rain barrel or put in a storm garden or something. Is this a scenario where they could do something like that?
Commissioner, I do believe they could, and if, if you wished, I could relay that to the applicant and bring that back at the next meeting, or have them come and, and say that. The ordinance does not require an applicant to do so. We always ask that they make some motion, some method of trying to recoup that.
And they have not done that in this case?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I, I would support the motion to table, and just ask if you could put some pressure on them.
I agree.
They may have a reason why they can't, but I'd like to, in their absence, I'd like to at least try.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Um, any other Commissioner comment? All right, then I'll call the vote on the motion to table. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Abstaining, okay. Uh, motion passes six to nothing with one abst...
Why is John abstaining?
Much like you do, Rich, I don't have to explain it.
Okay.
Do you, do you need more information?
Okay.
You just, you, you have a conflict? A legal conflict?
Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Booker, we're moving on. Uh, motion passes six to nothing with one abstention. All right, uh, Mr. Norsini, you will communicate with them, and we will try to have them at the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Uh, 2020 budget discussion, Mr. Zankowski and Mr. White. Bob, you need your mic.
Sorry. If, I asked Ian if he could bring up on the screen, um, slide presentation that we have. There we go. All right, we talked about administration recommendations for the 2020 budget. We recommend the board, um, schedule special meetings in 2020 to include the following. Set board commissioner's goals, uh, priorities for the organization that will help drive a lot of the performance measures of that particular item as it relates to the budget. Ask that the board schedule, uh, that they would, uh, recommend the board schedule special meetings for the following items to evaluate the projects that were submitted to the board earlier during the work sessions, as well as being submitted directly to you. At the October 7th in 2019, we'd ask that you meet to discuss those. Recommend the board schedule meetings to evaluate the additional staffing requests in 2020 that was presented to you during the October 28th special meeting. We'd recommend the board schedule meetings to include the development of township-wide parks and facilities, uh, and maintenance improvements, uh, plan that would be for the board to look at, and the suggestion would be that the Parks Board to review and give recommendations in 2020. They've done a lot of work on this so far, and it would seem like a natural fit, so we'd recommend that that, that, the possibility that they would look at that. Suggest Carfac review and make a recommendation on the following two items, uh, regarding a permanent funding plan for capital projects, and evaluate, uh, and review the sanitary sewer system. Suggest the Shade Tree Commission, review and make recommendations. We had started to discuss the item regarding the, uh, street trees in the right-of-way of the township, uh, that Shade Tree would, uh, discuss that, make a recommendation to the board, as they gather a lot of information in regards to that particular item. We'd also look at evaluating the, uh, possibility of dedicated millage for the following groups, which is the Radnor Memorial Library, as well as all the community groups, uh, serving the Radnor residents. That would be something that the board could consider. And we are recommending that the board adopt additional millage, um, to cover the fire operations, serving the Radnor community, uh, and those, uh, entail the Radnor Fire Company, the Radnor Ambulance, uh, Bryn Mawr Fire, and Brumall Fire would be all-inclusive on that, and the millage, added millage rate would be .3770.
All right, so for my part, uh, just updating the board and the public on the things that have changed since we presented at the October 21st Board of Commissioner meeting. During that presentation, we had a, a baseline general fund operating statement, um, and what I've done is, we've labeled, um, what those numbers were back on the 21st versus what they are today. You'll see, for the most part, revenues are the same, just a, a real, real slight reduction in some of the estimates for the Act 511 taxes. But really, where the, the differences are, is on the, the expense side, specifically in payroll and related. There's roughly a $461,000 reduction. That, um, is due to the renewal costs for the healthcare, which was part of the consent agenda that the board adopted earlier tonight. By agreeing to a two-year renewal, um, we got, we will realize a lower cost in 2020, and at the same time, receive or realize, um, growth protection in 2021, uh, where the, the rate cannot increase by higher than 3% in 2021. Whereas, if we just did our typical annual one-year renewals that we've done since we've been part of the healthcare trust, um, we would, we would, um, have slightly higher, uh, renewal costs for 2020, and there would be, uh, no protection for 2021. It would be whatever the, um, the trust, uh, passed along to all of its members. So, that's the biggest change in, uh, what's driving that number down. We take a look at other operating...
Bill, before we leave that, this is the issue I wanted to understand earlier. We were gonna do it on new business, but I guess since you just went through it, it's probably the best time. So, explained again, if we sign up for two years, we get more of a benefit than if we sign up for one year, or get more of a reduction, you're saying? Or less, or less, or less of a reduction?
In year one, uh, we get more of a reduction, so greater savings in 2020, in the 2020 renewal. And then, uh, in year two, uh, there is a cap on the amount that the healthcare costs could go up. So, we get that protection as well. So, in, by doing the two-year renewal, there's a benefit in 2020 and in 2021.
Well, if it goes up, but it went down, what if it goes down?
We would, if it's, so if it's less than...
Then we committed to the two-year price.
No, in year two, if it's less than 3%, we get whatever the actual renewal amount is. If it's 1%, it's one. If it's less than one, we'll realize that as well.
But you said that it went down this year.
What's, which is this year? Are we talking 2020?
2020.
Yeah, so, the, the decision was a one-year renewal or commit to a two-year renewal. The, in either scenario, for 2020, health insurance costs were going to go down. If we commit to the two-year renewal, they will be cheaper than they would if we committed to the one-year renewal. And it's in the legislative summary that's part of the board packet.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you, uh, Mr. White, that, what you laid out in the legislative summary is ex, very explanatory. You gave us all of the information we needed, as well as all of the dollar amounts and what we'll be saving, so thank you very much.
Well, but, but again, the issue is, if it goes down again next year, we will be paying the same for two years, so we won't realize the savings from the healthcare trust if it goes down. Also, what, what went down, what caused it to go down for 2020? And, um, explain, we had a net decrease of 10.53 is what, what you're showing versus a net decrease of 7.53%. So, what, what's driving those two, and, and what's in it for the trust? Why would the trust do this if it's going to, um, hurt the trust as far as its ability to, to pay claims?
Well, I can't speak for the trust, uh, other than to say that I'm sure whatever, well, I, um, the rates that we are quoted during our renewal process are, uh, much the same as RHM on the, on the sewer side. It's the trust forecasting what their claims experience is going to be and allocating it based on the size and the number of lives that we're insuring with Rad, with our group. And then, obviously, that's aggregated, uh, by all of the members. So, uh, what's driving one number versus the other, I, I cannot go into detail on. I don't have that information. Alls I know is, is that they've quoted us these amounts for renewal.
What drove it to go down for 2020? Healthcare costs have been going up around the country. Why, why is Delaware Valley down?
Again, I, I can't, I cannot speak for why Delaware Trust is realizing those savings.
Okay, well, all right. Just bear with, bear with, bear with me, bear with me.
So, but again, suppose, I, I, all right, I'll, I'll accept that it went down, and we're gonna, we're gonna, you're gonna take the 10.3, 10.53% reduction for a two-year commitment? Versus, versus a 7.53 if we just did a one-year commitment?
Yes.
Right.
There's an important element to that.
Right, so, but what, if it's a two-year agreement, if it goes down again another 10% next year, we won't be able to realize that.
We will realize that. The, the protection is, is that it will not grow by more than 3%. If the 2021 renewal is less than that 3%, whether it be 1% increase or a 10% decrease, we are eligible to realize those savings.
Well, then what's the commitment with the two years, then?
I, I, I'm, again, I'm not sure why they're offering. It's the first time in the 10 years that we've, that I've been here with Radnor that they've offered this, um, but they have, and it's, it's exactly as I'm explaining it. We've, we talked to them directly about it, we asked these same questions, and this is where they're at.
It doesn't seem like there's any benefit for the trust to do this, though. It's only downside...
Except, except maybe not to lose folks, 'cause there are competitors out there. There's a couple startups, um, and I think they're trying to, again, I'm speculating based on what I'm seeing, and I'm not speaking for the trust, but if you're trying to retain your clients, that's a way to do it.
So, who are they losing clients to? Is there, is there somebody who's reducing costs even more?
I, 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 I don't know if they're reducing costs more. I, I don't have that information.
Well, what's driving them losing clients, then?
We will bring the Delaware Trust in, and they can present to the board, and they can answer these questions directly. I am, I am not their representative. I don't have their information.
When a deal seems too good to be true, I gotta, I wanna, I'm gonna be skeptical about it. So, that's, that's, I would love it. I would be great if you brought them in.
I think, I think the best answer is to have a...
If we had a couple private meetings, that's fine, but if you want to bring them in so we can understand exactly what's happening, what's driving, where they're gonna cap upside and then give us all the downside if it costs go down again, and still have a two-year commitment, it, it seems...
But just remember, the way the trust operates is that there's no profit motive. Uh, the, 100% of the premiums going into the trust are used to pay the claims. If the claims are less than that amount, which they are every year, those are returned back to the clients through the rate stabilization. So, there's, there would be no reason for them to hang on to the money or charge one rate, realize greater savings, and then run with it, 'cause they are, they are a representative of all their clients. They're, they're not a profit-driven entity.
Well, then why they care about keeping, so I, I, so I want to understand their business because then it shouldn't be so important if people come, come in and out, you know, why they want a two-year commitment, and then they're asked, they're limiting the tops, upside, but, uh, not downside. Also, our expense for, for 2020 is gonna be $4,008,000 for healthcare? Is that what the number is?
That sounds, that sounds right, yep.
Four, four, four million?
It's in, it's a, I don't have it memorized. It's a $4 million amount.
And that's for all 126?
Plus retiree.
Plus retirees, and how many are, are on that?
Uh, a little over 100, like 115 retirees.
And that includes both unions or all unions or just the, um...
The retirees?
Yeah, the hundred, the hundred, that are retirees.
Yeah.
That's rate versus, uh...
FOP.
FOP.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, with the savings realized, uh, that's one of the big numbers that, that changed this payroll and related estimate. We also, uh, went back in and changed some overtime requests and, um, an assumption on vacant position refills. The next category under other operating, uh, the, the biggest change there, we decreased it by 340,000 and change. There were some contractual service requests, uh, and a couple of the departments that, uh, that we took out, and we'll just have to wait until, uh, a future budget cycle when revenues, uh, will support, uh, increases for contractual services. The last category, then, is on the, the capital side. This, again, this is the departmental capital, the fleet and the operating equipment. Uh, there were several requests for equipment, um, that, uh, we reprioritized and moved to, uh, future years, and it, not so much on the fleet side, uh, but on the, the equipment side, um, so there's a roughly 300, or $260,000 in savings there. So, the impact to the net revenue is that in October, we were looking at about 265,000. We were aiming for roughly 1.2 million and change. Uh, that, that wasn't an accident, um, because we were trying to find a way to reincorporate back in funding for, um, the library and the various, uh, community organizations at amounts that were consistent with prior years or with the, uh, slight cost of living type of increase. And this recommendation of rebuilding these back into the general fund budget numbers is, um, in concert with the recommendation of funding the fire company through millage. Uh, obviously, if, if the fire company discussion goes, uh, if the board wants to go in a different direction there, there's a, there's another 1.2 million roughly needed to fund the fire company requests. Uh, so, real quickly, then, um, with regard to capital, on the general capital side, they get, this is the infrastructure, these are the signals, the sidewalks, the, uh, traffic improvements, uh, parks, trails, uh, and those types of, uh, capital projects. Uh, there's no new funding, uh, included for next year. Instead, uh, administratively, we'll focus on making sure that we install the capital items that were part of the 7.3 million that the board borrowed earlier this year, which did include several projects, um, several large projects. So, it's not like nothing will get done, but we'll focus on the 7.3. For sanitary sewer, there's no new project funding. The 2020 projects, uh, will consist of spending down the remainder of the two, the 2018 emergency sewer bonds, which is really the skunk hollow trunk line, uh, that's going on currently. Uh, and again, to note, if emergency repairs are needed, uh, the, in most, if it's a large enough one, the general fund will have to pay. Uh, we can get in a little bit more detail about that next, at the next, uh, meeting. And then, as the manager recommended with regard to identifying and funding projects, I just wanted to point out or emphasize that, uh, with the cycle, if there are projects on the stormwater front that the board would like to get going on immediately, um, the, it, in almost any scenario, it's gonna require some sort of financing. Just keep in mind that with the financing, we can build in the, the expense in 2021 or a later year, um, at which time, uh, the rate could be adjusted. So, if we don't include any rate changes immediately for stormwater, that doesn't mean we can't go, get going with projects if the board wishes. Uh, and then finally, uh, with regard to the remaining calendar, um, we have a meeting scheduled, uh, for next Monday, a week from tonight, to finalize. Hopefully, at that meeting, we could finalize the millage discussion, uh, as well as the sewer rent and stormwater fee for next year, uh, and then review any capital projects to be included, uh, that the board would like to see, uh, and that, that's building off of the, the capital project lists that were distributed, uh, a couple, uh, about a week and a half ago. And then finally, the, well, the November 25th meeting would, uh, is slated for the introduction of the budget-related ordinances, uh, and then at the December 9th meeting, those ordinances would be adopted, along with any other related budget, uh, legislation, uh, which includes the wage and salary schedule and any others that come out of our, our meetings. Uh, so that is the update for tonight.
So, I thought we talked about a separate millage for those, the library. Bob had it in the, before you came on, he talked about separate millage. Is that part of this, or is that not part of this?
Yes, so, what, uh, what we're, what we went back and did is, we recognized the fact that the October meeting, the board was presented with a, a lot of items that were unfunded, uh, and dollar amounts that were, uh, probably, well, not, they were unrealistic and to fix right away. So, uh, in going back and coming up with this recommendation, uh, we tried to identify incremental fixes. So, for 2020, or a decision during this budget cycle, uh, the millage for the fire companies would be added, and then in a future year, consider additional millage then to fund, uh, the library and other community organizations. One of the, the reasons we came to that is, we also know that we've talked about capital and our struggles to have a sustained capital funding program. If revenues remain consistent, um, not, not this year, not 2020, but in 2021, if revenues remain consistent and the library is, is funded outside of the current millage, then that should free up current revenues that can be used to help start funding our capital program. So, uh, that can, again, we're, we're trying to find incremental fixes, uh, and do this over multiple years instead of, you know, taking a look at a list that has a, a huge dollar amount, um, and asking, asking you, the board, to, to sift through that.
For, for 2020, though, the millage for those, for the library and those other organizations, basically separate 501(c)(3)'s, will be part of the budget, not separate millage, is what you're saying?
That is exactly right. Yeah, we went, we were through the healthcare, reducing some of the, the requests on contractual services in the, the operating budgets. That's where we were able to reduce budgets administratively to get to about 1.2 million in net revenue, which that money would be then, would be used to fund the library and community organizations, and the new millage would fund the fire companies.
The, the new millage is about 9... The, the new millage is about 9% increase as I calculated it. I thought that the, we talked about 1.3, 1.2 million, you mentioned the number. I thought the fire company was talking about $250,000. Is it now 1.3 million? Is that what the number was?
I believe the, the 250,000 that the fire company mentioned the other, at the special meeting was in addition to what they're currently getting.
So, but it seems a jump to go to 1.3 million and a 9% increase from that.
It includes the other fire departments as well.
Yeah, it includes the township's contribution to Bryn Mawr and Brumall, as well as the capital contributions to Radnor Fire and Brumall Fire. So it's, it's the total amount that Radnor currently provides to the fire companies, both operating and capital.
And that would be, and that would be separate millage?
That's what we're proposing, yes.
Bill, I have a question here. Um, and I'm considering with the, uh, with the, the fire, um, first of all, I think that we need a signed pilot resolution. The board needs to come up with a resolution and ask certain nonprofits for a pilot. Because fires is, is a big part of our shortfall. So if I choose to vote for this, and I don't know which way I'm going, why, um, why is there a millage that's just based on the taxpayer? Why is this not a fee? So we could ask some of the nonprofits that won't help us with the pilot, uh, why don't we make a fee and then they're required to do it? So granted, while we can't, um, we don't get to write it off on our taxes, we'd have to weigh the formula. Well, you know, it's a 30% discount versus, uh, more money from institutions that own, uh, large parcels of land.
It's, so in talking about establishing a fee, um, there's, the difficulty is identifying a fair base to apply the fee. Uh, because you, you can't just apply the fee to a certain group of folks, like nonprofits. The same fee would have to apply to all the users of the fire, of the companies.
Sure.
So the, so you would, you'd end up charging that fee to, to the residents as well?
The residents as well as paying for it, I'm just asking for additional help from, from all the, uh, landowners, whether you're nonprofit, you're residential, you're institutional, you're business, to chip in via a fee as opposed to adding it onto the tax. You understand what I'm saying, correct?
No, I'm, I'm...
So, Bill, if, so this, so if we create, if we carve out the fire department and, and, or the emergency services, and that becomes its own millage, we would take that and put that in a fund, a separate fund, so that money would sit there, we'd be able to see it coming in and out, um, it wouldn't go just into our general fund, it wouldn't be co-mangled, it would go into its own fund, correct?
Yes, that would be the recommendation to treat it that way.
Okay, so if we had that, its own separate fund, um, is there, so to Sean's point, would there, can we consider, maybe we can't consider that in this moment, but moving forward, a way that we can in some way, um, recoup some funding from, from the other groups that are benefiting from the services of fire since, and then it would, we can see that come in and go into a fund like the stormwater fee and whatnot.
Sure, to the extent we have pilots, absolutely, uh, that could be deposited into the same special fund and distributed to the fire companies. Or those could be made directly to the fire companies, separate of going through the township at all.
Okay, let me, actually, so let me, let me back up. Okay, we don't have a pilot, it's unlikely that we're gonna get a pilot, okay? But I think that should be a priority of this board, is to get a resolution, we can figure out what is a fair amount and vote on it, and whether or not these institutions want to contribute, fine. Now, that's a separate issue. Now, I'm looking, and what I'm trying to say is, we have a sewer fee, which we can't write off our taxes. That applies to basically anyone that uses water that goes through our lines. Same thing with stormwater, based on whatever metric that is. So, um, the size of your lot. So based on the size of your lot or, or whatever, um, your property value, then there should be a fee that would go to EMS and fire, et cetera.
Or you could use square footage of buildings under roof.
Yes, square foot, whatever that formula is, but, but there is a, a large percentage of entities that are not, that use our fire, that use our ambulance, that have ambulances that may go to their special events, that do not pay $1. And if we make this a millage and a tax, we will not see any contribution from them. So why are we doing it as a tax and not a fee?
And, and again, as a fee, for instance, buildings under roof, square footage under roof, which is part of all these, every property's got a, gonna be reassessed, even the exempt parcels will have a, a square footage of under roof. That could be used as the basis for the fee, perhaps. It's rationally related to a fire expense. And, um, something to, to, to kick around with the legal team.
You can also look at ambulance, too. I mean, if you have a dorm, for instance, and you have a thousand people there, um, and you use their ambulance, I mean, there, there's a million different ways to cut it, but, but, but yeah, I think that, um, that needs, I, I guess, getting back to, you know, why are we looking at it as a tax and not a fee? That's my question.
Yeah, I, I, I think that our solicitor's gonna have to, um, help us with the legalities of it. I, I mean, for the same reason we don't charge a fee for police, um, there's, and for the same reason why we can charge a fee for the sewer and stormwaters, again, there's no, there's no base, there's, to apply the fee to that is uniform across all users. How do you charge for the opportunity or the availability to dial 911?
Uh, well, you're, but, uh, so, uh, it, it just sounds contradictory, contradictory to me when you're saying you can't do it, you know, what's the charge for 911? But there is a charge for when you call 911 and the fire comes, company comes out, or you have, uh, an ambulance comes out. It just, uh, it does, it doesn't make sense to me.
Let me just weigh in a little bit on the issue. Fees that the township charges, um, have to be based on something that the township is doing, some township service. Not what fire company's doing, not what EMS is doing, they are not township. So fees it, like the stormwater fee is based on what the township provides for maintaining stormwater. Sewer, water, you know, those utilities, so they're fees. Townships it, try to generate revenue for fire companies and EMS, sometimes put it on the ballot, sometimes enact, um, real estate taxes. And that gets dedicated to fire company, um, some of the codes, say in a second-class township, you can put two mills for fire. If you want to exceed that, you gotta put it on the ballot. Now, you're, you don't have those limitations in Radnor Township because you're a home role municipality. But that's, then that is spread equally across the board, based on real estate. So you're using fees and taxes interchange, they're not the same thing?
I, I know they're not the same thing. Again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying, you have, um, you know, just, you know, just what you said, when you, you, you can't, the fire company isn't gonna get a call and say, oh, well, and the police aren't gonna get a call from 911 saying, oh, well, because you don't contribute, we're not gonna come. They're gonna come regardless, and they should pay regardless.
Well, the, the fee is the fee that the person that's using the, the EMS gets, right? They get charged a fee. Their insurance carrier gets charged a fee. You know, fire company, fire company doesn't, police doesn't charge fees because we can't.
I, I just see that it's, it's, it's an, it's an inequitable split.
What's the precedence for establishing a fire, fire service fee based on square foot of buildings under roof on each parcel? There's no precedent, so is there any precedent against implementing something like that?
You, you still have to go back with the fee. Who's providing the service for the fee, Rich? And you, and that's an area.
The, the township is providing the service to its constituents through, as, as, it's a subcontract or a, it's a, it's a delegation to the fire companies. And we are passing through that fee.
But it's not the township providing the service. I mean, go back to the base.
It's like subrogation, it's as if the township is providing it through, we're providing it through our contracts with others.
Very tenuous, very tenuous, problem.
It, it is tenuous, but I, I'm suggesting that we evaluate whether, how tenuous that, that relationship is.
We can look, we can look at it, but, you know, fees are, in this state, fees have to be related to a service that the township provides.
And in the alternative, it will be an additional assessment of about 9% or more on current ratepayers, and it would not reach the nonprofit ratepayers, so...
If it's a real estate.
Real, because it'll be, it'll be on taxable, taxable real estate. So that's what the, the concern is, to pass 9% to all of the residents and not to all of the institutions that, that might be also using the service in, in greater amounts than the residents.
I mean, yeah, I, I, I have to echo what Rich is saying. I mean, we all have to be kidding ourselves to think that the fire isn't really an extension of, of our government. Uh, we support them, I don't know what percentage of the budget we help, but it's got, what is it, 50%? Well, how much more? How much? It's, so, so you're a $4 million entity? Okay. But it's still a, a large percentage, and, um, it, again, it's, it's inequitable. And I, I will echo what Rich says, that just because it hasn't been done, I think we need to think outside the box, because every year, we have more and more and more fees and costs, and it's the taxpayers that get stuck with it.
Alternatively, you said we could put it on the ballot, what would we put on the ballot?
A dedicated real estate tax for fire or EMS.
Okay, so that way, we would get buy-in from the constituents. However, it still wouldn't address the issue of reaching the, the exempt parcels.
Correct. We, we have the system we have in this state. If you can qualify under the tests that have been laid out by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court to meet that charitable exemption, you get it. And to enact a fee, to somehow get the same revenue because they're tax-exempt, um, you know, then you're, then you're targeting that particular group.
If, if Penn decided they were not going to, they, if Penn complies with their agreement and they do not file for an exemption, would a special millage for fire be part of that, uh, exception, exception, or a promise not to file for an exemption? Or would that not be part of the taxable base for Penn?
Yeah, I don't think there's any limitations on that agreement with Penn. I mean, they, you know, they are paying full real estate taxes, whatever they are.
And that would include a fire assessment?
If that, correct, on real estate.
That's your considered opinion right now, so we'll remember that going forward.
Great.
So is it, so is it worth it, if we are...
I wonder if there, there is will, though.
If we're considering a dedicated tax, uh, in order to support our fire and EMS, um, is it worth, is it worth it to start having a conversation with the, the nonprofit entities and say, you know, this is something we're looking at, our taxpayers are going to be, um, you know, contributing in this way, how is it, how would you be willing to join with us? I mean, I know they're against the idea of a pilot, you know, to go to what, our general fund or whatever, but this is specific, it's very dedicated. So if, you know, with the, we've got the, the, um, the millage for the real estate residents, then do we say, can you equal that? And as you said, Bill, is it, you know, does it come to us? I don't know. Or does it go directly to the fire, um, the fire companies?
One of the items, um, is understanding that both, we, the township cannot just adopt a resolution or and say, you will pay a pilot. It has to be agreed upon by both parties. Um, it's something that we can look at. Uh, I've had discussions with one of the universities, and they said they would consider it if we could quantify what those expenses are, what the impacts are to that particular entity, which I think, working with the fire company and with our staff, we could probably do that. But that's something that we cannot get done in the next month or so, there will be time for that. So yes, that is something that, if the board says, yes, we would like to pursue that, we will work closely with the fire companies, then try to qualify and quantify exactly what are being asked for, so that would be one of the items that we'd look at.
Bob, yeah, I propose a, a resolution to ask for a pilot, and we can come up with a formula. If the nonprofits don't want to pay for it, that's up to them, but, but we are at a point where this isn't working, and the writing on the wall is, this hasn't been working and it won't work, and we're gonna get deeper and deeper and deeper in the hole. And each year, we do this budget, it's, uh, it is an issue of trying to jam a, you know, a round hole through a square peg, and there's a lot of stuff on the fly and things get cut, and it's unsustainable going forward. Our budgets are unsustainable going forward.
Well, I think that's one of the things we're proposing, because, uh, a very important service that is provided here in the township is fire and ambulance, very important. And to put it into its own separate millage, it eliminates that ability to have fire every year determine, what are we going to get this year, because they have to start planning. And knowing that it's the volunteer service, and anywhere you look or you read, you know that the volunteer service is shrinking. And anything we can do now to help support them and provide that separated millage, um, they can start planning for that. It's something that, it's been a long-term issue, and I think it lays on, you know, now, unfortunately, you have to deal with a lot of these items. Now, because you can't kick the can any further down, but I think it segments it out to where people know that this is what I am paying for specifically, is for that fire and ambulance service that is outstanding, that is provided to this community.
So as we do that, our taxes are still gonna go up, other entities aren't paying anything. So if, I don't know what, if we're gonna have an increase of, you know, and you can talk millage or via stormwater, which is just a de facto tax, it's going up, I don't know, 5, 7, 10%, and it's gonna have to happen every year, and it's not sustainable. And it is the taxpayer, it is the, the property taxpayer, the business taxpayer, that gets hit with this. And it is unsustainable, it is unfair, and it's really hard for me, you know, I, I voted for it last year. You're gonna get pushed in a corner this year, and every year, the majority is gonna get pushed into voting for something, and it's gonna be clips at 10, 12%. And that is, um, we need to think outside of the box.
Well, I, I think we have looked outside the box and presented different items, and we'll continue to keep doing those types of things. For us to think that a pilot of whatever the universities or nonprofits are going to pay is going to solve our problems, they aren't going to save our problems. But as if one of the large institutions here are willing to have that conversation with us now, if we could go to them with costs and say, this is really, the impacts, go there with the calls, they said they will consider that. And I think that is a huge movement on these organi, this, these organizations to say, we are willing to entertain that.
So I, I've heard that an institution would help with the sidewalk they didn't. I've heard, no, I've heard an institution that would...
Sean, 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 okay. So I think we've heard the desire that there be a conversation, that we start some conversations with the nonprofit entities that utilize the services. Aiman, is that information that you can work with our staff and provide, that you guys have that kind of broken out with regards to the ser, the costs associated with servicing, you know, some of... know, some of the nonprofit institutions? I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Before, as Eamon comes up, Bob, didn't, I think we voted to a resolution to, to impose or to request a pilot from the agreements, from the 501(c), from the, from the institutions, probably like three or four years ago?
We did.
And we didn't get, we didn't get the vote, I don't think, to pass it?
I think it, there was some discussion in which we would do that. However, there were other negotiations going on contrary to what we were trying to do that I think hurt that scenario. I think now we have the institutions that are willing to listen and willing to understand that, so I think working closely with the fire department and staff here, Bill and his department, I think we'll be able to put that information together that they will consider, because I think they realize they are impacted. You know, it, there are responses that go to all the nonprofits. So I think of us putting that detail together should be very, very helpful.
Well, and I think the township making this move to create, you know, if we decide to go this route, to create the dedicated millage, you know, they have to see that, you know, we are in making the investment, that we see this as something important, we as a township, you know, we're not kidding around. Like, this is a serious issue.
Absolutely.
So, I think, you know, if we can go to them with that and have calm, cool heads with some real information behind it, making those, having those discussions, it might be beneficial. Eamon, thank you.
No problem. Good evening. Just in response to your, your question or inquiry, we certainly can provide information. We previously worked with the staff in the past, in particular with the colleges, understanding what the call volume impact is for each of those schools. We looked at Villanova's EMS statistics today. As of two o'clock this afternoon, we've had 189 ambulance calls, just the Villanova alone. I think the only, we're happy to hear this conversation going on as far as it pertains to Radnor, Brumall, and Brynmar. I think the biggest thing is, is this is continuing to be fleshed out, is that even with the township potentially adopting a tax and having that in place, the township is still going to be benefiting from a lot of volunteers continuing to put time in to serve the community as both firefighters and EMTs. As the manager mentioned, the volunteer shortage and problem is not germane to certain areas of the country or in Pennsylvania, it's affecting everybody. We've done a decent job at the three fire companies that service Radnor Township in trying to slow that down, and entice people to volunteer for their community and here in Radnor Township. But as I said before, understand that, as Commissioner Farley pointed out, it is a scary thing to think about, these increases of money. It is a big deal. We're not going backwards. Having a good plan, the ability to, to plan in the future, as the manager mentioned, the ability to sit down with you all at the table and steward this money is going to be very important. But the continued investment, especially as it pertains to having the paid staff, is not going away. And yes, it is, it gives you angina, it's a pain in the butt, but it is something that needs to be attacked vigorously, and a good plan needs to be laid out for the future, because again, we're on the same plateau as the police go, as far as level importance when it comes to first responders in the community. And that's how it needs to be, needs to be looked at. But again, understand, even with this, you're still going to have a good group of volunteers that are still going to be responding to calls and not collecting a salary or benefits, and saving taxpayers a lot of money. So, I mean, it's something just not to lose sight of as we're continuing to have this discussion.
Thank you, Eamon. I appreciate that. Does anyone have, since we dragged Eamon to the podium, does anyone have any questions that are...
Yeah.
Is it respectful?
All my questions are respectful. They're respectful to the township in the sense that it's our money, and we should, we should want to know where it's going to. What is your budget, Eamon? Wayne's budget?
Our budget right now will just be under $2 million for the current budget year.
And, and our donation or chip in, I don't know what...
It counts for almost forty percent of our budget.
For forty percent?
Correct.
Okay, so I believe that we're fair enough stakeholders, that's not to you, but to everybody. And where we, not to the fire, but to the community, where it's important, it's, it's important that these, you said not, how many ambulance calls to the colleges?
To Villanova, 180.
Well, the college, yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, no, it wasn't because of this meeting tonight, we were just looking at statistics for the month and doing our normal reports for the year, and Villanova just 189 calls as of this afternoon for EMS responses.
For the month?
Year-to-date.
Year-to...
Year-to-date.
Okay, and what's a cost per call that it costs you guys?
Uh, it varies. Typically, you're looking at your average ambulance calls between six and $800 is your average.
Okay, and what, and what percent do you recoup of that? So what is, so eight hun, so say 700 times what, 198 calls?
Yeah, I mean, as far, as far as what we're recouping on typical calls, between collections or regular billing cycle, you're looking at around seventy percent or a little bit greater return.
So about, so it's about 138,000. We'll say 140,000 is what you would lay out for all those ambulance calls.
Correct.
And, and what, and what percent? You said not all that gets paid?
Well, it depends on your payer mix, as we talked about in previous meetings. So if we're looking at a nursing facility where we can't bill above a certain amount because people are on Medicaid or Medicare, that's different than a college where if someone's a selfpayer, where they're on commercial insurance, and commercial insurance reimburses different rates, depending if it's a basic life support call or an advanced life support call. So, I mean, we can, again, I can sit offline with you, but it's not as clean as you may think. There's nuance with the system and where you're responding.
Yeah, a couple more questions. So, their football games, do you send an ambulance to their football games, or is that...
Which ones?
Villanova.
No.
Okay, so that's their ambulance?
Yeah, so sometimes they'll ask us to come up to help with an event, whether it's a soccer game, you know, field hockey tournament, something of that nature. Typically, hold on, let me just please, let me answer. Radnor, Radnor Middle School, Vatford Military Academy, we will, we do do standbys at those places. We have agreements set up with them, so we are charging for the standby services being there, even if it's with a volunteer crew. We are charging for that. Typically, if it's something with the Special Olympics, because it's Special Olympics, we do that, you know, pro bono, because it's Special Olympics. But typically, we are charging if there's a standby occurring, which is not atypical for EMS services doing that in the area.
Okay, so if there is a, a special event, then, and you guys are there, you are billing them and...
Correct.
Okay.
And we have a fee schedule that we advertise, and the same would go if we do a fireworks standby at St. David's, you know, it's in Tridiferent. St. David's, we do a fireworks standby for them, and we bill them for the fire truck being there, probably for the safety of the spectators there. I think it's July Fourth, and they do theirs.
Anything else? Eamon, thank you for letting us put you on the spot.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So we'll continue this discussion next week, and we'll be upstairs next week, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, does anyone else have any other questions before we end this topic? Okay. All right, moving on. Radnor TAP Trail Presentation and Discussion, Mr. Norsini and Mr. Simone.
Mr. Simone is here to take that one present.
Okay. Good evening. How are you?
Thank you very much for your time. My name's Peter Simone with the firm Simone Collins, and I'm going to give you a short presentation on the Radnor Trail. We've been working on this project in one form or another for over seven years. And really, the genesis of this is the Radnor Trail, which is the off-road trail, it's on the Pendott Right-Away former railroad, that the township went through a long and arduous fight for. Mary Coe, who's here tonight, was one of the, was one of the champions and local heroes of that fight. And, and I would suggest to you that the Radnor Trail today is, if not the most popular and most loved, one of the most popular and most loved recreational facilities, not only in the township, but in the general region. In 2013, township sent out RFPs to do a township-wide trail plan. We were fortunate enough to, to win that project, and through about a 15-month process with many, many meetings, public meetings, focus groups, special meetings with groups like the Lenore Ave residents, we worked through a trail plan that had tremendous participation, had tremendous support to come up with the overall trail plan for the township. Following that, we talked with our committee and township staff about implementation. How do you go about taking something that's on paper and building it? And obviously, the way to do that is to go after grants. We submitted three grants in 2015, one to Pendott through their TAP program, one through to DCNR, and one to DCD, and we were three for three. We got a total of 1.75 million. And, and based on that, the township retained our multidisciplinary team to do the construction documents through the Pendott ECMS process, to do construction documents for that trail. Just to go over the map that you see in front of you, the trail sections that will be built are broken into three segments. One, the northern segment goes from Wayne Avenue and the train station down Wayne Ave, it's an on-road trail primarily. It's, that route is used a lot by school kids today on their bikes, goes down Wayne Ave, gets to Conestoga, crosses Conestoga into the West Wayne Preserve and connects into the existing Radnor Trail. We had somebody here tonight from the Wayne Business Association. We see this as a safer way for people to go on bikes to downtown Wayne if they so choose. The second segment goes from the southern end of the Radnor Trail, the existing off-road, along the road across Route 30, circles around the high school, dramatically improving what is a horrible lack of pedestrian facilities around the school. It's the only section of Route 30 that doesn't have a sidewalk, although there's a beaten path there where kids run across country and walk, and in our estimation, our professional judgment, it's very dangerous in terms of walking or running. It circles around the, the high school, will connect to two SEPTA railway stations, so it's a transportation enhancement. The third section starts at the stadium, a parking lot on, excuse me, the stadium train station on Ithaca Ave, right near Villanova University. It's an on-road section primarily, it goes down Ithaca Ave, all the way down to Brynmar Ave. At that point, it crosses Brynmar Ave, goes on a short section of what's called a cycle track, and then makes a left and goes south through the Cornerstone HOA property that will connect into Haverford Township, where Haverford is building or has built sections of trail and will continue to do so. The reason we think this project got funding, as you see it here, was because it was a realistic option to building what's called the Radnor Seg, Segment of the Circuit Trail. The Circuit Trail is a regional effort involving communities on both sides of the Delaware River to create hundreds of miles of trails. The other option to this is a, is an off-road segment that goes north, south through the township, that would have to fly over the blue route on a series of multimillion-dollar bridges, and then go down the SEPTA Right-Away, which may never happen with the expansion of SEPTA service to King of Prussia. So we, the reason we thought this got funding, as it did a few years ago, was because that it is a realistic option to, to make that connection. And it's a regional connection, it's not only going to be used by township residents, but also is going to be used by folks in the region. The other thing I'll just mention quickly is you had a, a very nice presentation from some high school students talking about energy efficiency. Getting out of your car and getting on a bike is a very energy-efficient mode, trying to eliminate some of those short trips, which tend to be the most polluting to our atmosphere, is, is a good thing. In terms of the status, we're almost at the finish line. The traffic submission has been sitting with Pendott for several months. I have to tell you that working with Pendott is a, can be a somewhat frustrating experience. Right now, there's a, there's an internal dispute. We spent months getting approval of one section of the trail from the, from the head bike ped person in Harrisburg. Now the local traffic unit has a dispute with that. Our engineer is ready to seal the plans, we feel it's safe, so that's holding us up there. The NPDS permit is ready to be signed off on, we, we had one rounder of, of questions, and that's been taken care of. Something called the categorical exclusion clearance is just waiting for signature. The reimbursement agreement is being handled by Mr. Norsini's office, those two bullet items you see there may have been taken care of since we wrote this presentation, but that is all but done. The right-of-way plans, a very important part of this process, have been approved by Pendott. The right-of-way plans are ready to go, the steps are clear, we sent all the information to the township over a month ago, and hopefully, that is proceeding. I don't know if it is, but there's no reason why it shouldn't be proceeding, and you have three property owners, as you know, you have to finalize negotiations for. The DM3 and other submission has been submitted with a few comments left. The constructibility re-submission is complete, but we have to wait until number one on that list is complete before we can submit it. So, we, we believe we're ready for bidding early next year with construction later, later next year. In terms of the, the money and the funding, you see here a summary slide showing the grants that we got, and we were four for four on this. You, we've gotten a total of $2,225,000, basically of your taxpayers' state money and other, and county money, and we've brought it back to this community to help fund this project. The design and engineering to date is 479,000. Construction inspection, you'll see a different number at a minute, our estimate was 100,000. That's being handled directly by the township at the township's choice. So, when you look at the estimate in the first column, cost of the township here is 368,000. If we add a 10% contingency, that number goes up to 570,000. The next item on the agenda is a requested change order, which we'll get to in a minute, that's in the yellow, and it brings the total estimated cost to the township somewhere between 408,000 and 610,000, depending on where the bids come in. We had another opportunity to submit grants. Mr. Zimkowski decided not to go for the multimodal grant, we thought we had a great opportunity because agencies like to give money to projects that are funded by other agencies. But we didn't go after that grant, which was due last Friday. So if you look at the cost of the township in terms of the, or excuse me, the total cost of the project as a percentage of the total cost, with the contingency without, township's paying between 15 and 21% of the total project price, which is, in my experience, a pretty good deal for any kind of project. Mr. Norsini asked us to look at those same numbers with a 15% contingency, which we show in this slide, so the numbers increase accordingly. And so again, as a percent of the total project, the township's paying somewhere between 15 and almost 24% of the total project cost. Before I move on to the, the change order request, which is a separate item I know on your agenda, I just want to pause here to see if you have questions or comment that I can try to respond to.
One of the specific concerns that's come up is the connection to the trail at Doyle Road into the West Wayne Preserve.
You mean Lenore?
Lenore, sorry. I said Doyle, Lenore. Thank you. Let me start by asking a couple of different questions, and I'll take my answer offline. Number one, what flexibility do we have with moving the specific location of the trail at this point? And number two, if we were to either choose not to move that location, or if we were to be unable to move that location, what flexibility do we have to deal with parking issues on that street and the crossing problem that a lot of the residents are foreseeing with the crosswalk that would be going across Conestoga Avenue into the West Wayne Preserve there?
Okay. First of all, Commissioner, I mentioned, we had a meeting back in probably 2014 with the residents of Lenore Ave. Originally, we had proposed to bring the trail on-road down Lenore Ave, they didn't like that idea, so we moved it, okay? And now it comes down West Wayne. The bike section of that trail continues on West Wayne underneath the railroad bridge, which is not a great option, except for very experienced cyclists. And certainly, I would not want to walk under that bridge as a pedestrian to get to the Friends of West Wayne Park. Everything, as, as much as I may complain about Pendott, I totally respect what they do in terms of safety of their projects. That is their mission. All the red tape, it's, all revolves around safety, and they're very careful and professional about that. This crossing, which some residents think it will be a problem, has been blessed by Pendott, and again, they're all about safety. I don't agree with their fear that people are going to drive to Lenore Ave and park on Lenore Ave to get to the trail. There are other trailheads nearby. My expectation is people in that neighborhood that connect to Lenore Ave will enjoy that connection, because they'll be able to walk across... because they'll be able to walk across the street safely, not go under that bridge, not have to drive their car from their neighborhood a quarter of a mile, under the bridge, up to the park, the park, to get to the trail. The other thing about Lenore Ave, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, you have to sort of know how to get in there. You have to really know the neighborhood because it's a one-way street coming south. Um, so I, I don't share their concern. And again, we made that change specifically several years ago, you know, based on their, um, based on their concerns. The second question is, what flexibility do we have to change that? I don't know. Because the plans are so far along. Um, one of the things that is in your materials, this project has gone on for 16 months longer than it was supposed to. And that's mainly through the fault of PennDOT because unlike some of their other roadway transportation projects, when they get a trail project, it goes to the bottom of the pile, and it doesn't always get reviewed. We've been waiting months and months for some of these reviews. In recognition of that, PennDOT has extended this project for more than 16 months so that we don't jeopardize the funding. If we were to go back and try to change the plans now on a perceived concern of a few residents, it could jeopardize the entire project. I don't know. But we, 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 we would not recommend that, uh, under any circumstances because number one, that plan has been approved by PennDOT. They deem it safe.
So, a couple of different things. Number one, it feels like we could at a minimum put up signs on Lenore that said, "No trail parking" or something. If that's not a problem, then the signs will never be respected by anyone because no one will ever be there, but we could at least do that.
Sure, that's, the township could do that anytime.
I'd be interested in some other thoughts that you had in terms of, you know, residents have concerns. I don't think that they're crazy. Um, it carries a lot of weight with me, what you say about PennDOT. If PennDOT has approved the crosswalk, then my experience with them has been that it's probably fine where it is. Um, the parking issue does seem to carry a little more weight with me. If that's the trailhead that goes into West Wayne Preserve, maybe trailhead isn't the right term for it, but if that's the entrance into the West Wayne Preserve, I could imagine people from the area just parking there to push a stroller in or something like that.
Well, I have, I have a suggested solution that might address that. Right now, township is working with Meloria Design, uh, on a, on a separately funded project to create storm order management in the West Wayne Preserve, which was always the purpose of retaining that space. Um, it, it, it is certainly possible, and I haven't seen the details of that design, but, uh, if, if the township wanted to add a dozen parking spaces to that site and have a connector up to the trail, I don't see, that's not gonna, that's gonna have an insignificant effect on the storm order planning that, and, and you have one of the best firms in the region, Meloria Design, doing that project for you. That would have no effect on storm order. It would create a place where people would be more convenient to park. Um, so, I mean, that's just off the top of my head, one suggestion. I don't think it's necessary, but if you feel it's necessary to calm the fears of residents, that, I think that's a very viable solution. It'll probably add almost no cost to that project.
Peter, if you remember, Peter, when we were dealing with Cornerstone's HOA, we had identical issues. And there we agreed, uh, no trail parking signs along Bryn Mawr and the first street into their project, and also we addressed the crossing with PennDOT.
Yes, yeah, we had similar concerns, and, um, um, again, I, I, every, for all commissioners, every, we've done over 100 trail projects, and every trail project we do, there are similar concerns, okay? Um, uh, s- some of them are, are well-founded, others are not. Um, so, uh, you know, there, and, and to be fair about it, there are always unintended consequences of every project. Uh, when you do a park, you know, it might be used a little differently than you intended, but we, we feel pretty confident that, uh, both at Cornerstone and here at Lenore Ave, it's not going to be, uh, a very desirable place to park. And again, the solution I suggested, to me, sounds a reasonable one if you really wanted to provide parking there.
And Pete, Peter and I have talked about this, this project a couple of times. Um, so what I'm saying now is, is no surprise, but I am opposed to the entrance at Lenore. I'm opposed to putting a trail through the Preserve to the Radnor Trail. For, for the commissioners who aren't familiar with this area, we've got a, we've got an intersection at West Wayne and Conestoga, which is where we want our kids and pedestrians crossing. Um, there's, there's a stoplight there. It's right by the Italian American Club. Um, and then we also have, if you go down a little bit farther, we have a crosswalk at South Devon and Conestoga. So ideally, um, I, I, for safety reasons, I would prefer the trail to go down West Wayne to the Friends of Radner, Radner Trail and enter the, the park there. But if you are going to put people on Conestoga, why put a second crosswalk in there and just have them go down to the South Devon parking, and they can, um, um, enter at the Gallagher Road entrance?
And then go where?
You're right on the trail.
You'd have to go up, you gotta go over to the trail?
No, there's an entrance right on the trail off Gallagher. I take my kids there to ride bikes.
Again, when we did, and Commissioner, you know, I respectfully disagree, um, we, we think this is a safe crossing. The traffic light that you mentioned at West Wayne and Conestoga creates gaps, okay? That's one of the reasons I believe PennDOT approved this crosswalk here. Because there are already gaps created, at least in one direction. The other direction, uh, you know, peop- that you, you have to look and, and, but, you know, state law gives, uh, precedence to pedestrians in a crosswalk. Uh, the township could, uh, post warning signs if you really feel it's a problem. Uh, but again, I have to rely on PennDOT District Six, who has looked at this closely and, under a microscope, and they feel it's safe. Um, uh, so I have to rely on that. I also have to rely on our professional judgment, professional judgment of traffic planning and design, who's a traffic engineer on this project. Um, so, you know, we are, we are, whether we like it or not, as professionals, as designers of record, um, we are, uh, professionally liable for these things. So we give this a great deal of thought. This is not something that we just sort of do willy-nilly and, and just come up with, "Oh, let's do this." No, we have to, we have to meet standards. So, um, uh, you know, I, I understand your, your opinion, but we, we just disagree. And again, uh, when we were, we, we were tasked with this, uh, project several years ago, uh, uh, di- different members from some of you are sitting in, where you're sitting today, and they said, "Let's go ahead with this." And if we had gone through the process, and PennDOT had come back to us, and they said, "The crossing at Lenore Ave is not safe. We're not going to allow you to do it," then we would have gone to alternatives. But, uh, that, that's, we're, we're not at that point right now.
But there, but there are alternatives available if we used West Wayne or South Devon to Gallagher.
We, we don't think there is, is viable or direct.
Also, wasn't there an issue, Peter, way back when about ADA, that the path through West Wayne Preserve gave us the opportunity to have an ADA ramp, whereas if we went down South Wayne or West Wayne, we have a pretty steep grade. And going across the parking lot at Friends of Radner Trails Park isn't really very ideal for that situation either.
And that's an important point. And again, I'm not so familiar further down Conestoga with the grades there. Uh, but I know one of our important design decisions, or why we thought it would work there, is when you look at the, the, the trail, that once you get into West Wayne Preserve, it grades up and to the right, it is graded at an ADA acceptable, uh, slope, so that it meets those ADA standards. Uh, I think there was a comment on Lenore, "We have to bump out the curb a little bit, uh, to get that handicap ramp in there." I think we're moving that curb out about five feet. That's necessary to meet those ADA standards. So again, uh, we had a look at all those things, uh, in addition to safety.
So Peter, Peter, another, another option then. Um, what about putting in sidewalks on the, I guess it'd be the south side of Conestoga near the IAC and running sidewalks down to the entrance, if that's where it has to be?
I, Commissioner, anything is physically possible, but to get sidewalks, you have to look at rightaway. Do we need to acquire rightaway? And if we have to acquire rightaway, um, typically you have to purchase it with private property owners. Um, the, the, the three property owners we're currently going to be negotiating easements with have, uh, at least signed letters of intent to negotiate with the township for that. So, uh, and, and that changes, I mean, as part of this project, that changes the whole rightaway. We'd have to go back and re-engineer and get new rightaway plans. It would put us back months and months and months. And I think it would jeopardize the project funding.
If it's a safer plan for the people using it, I, I, I'm okay with pushing the timeline back.
It's not an option, Commissioner. Because if we push the project back, we will probably lose 2.75 million dol- 2.2 million dollars worth of funding, because if the TAP money goes, DCNR's going to bail, DCD will bail, and the county will bail. And I don't think, and, and the other thing that would happen, if you lose the funding, for whatever reason, um, there aren't going to be a lot of agencies that are going to be stepping up to give Radnor Township grant money.
I'm ju- and tha- and that's fine. Um, you know, I, I can't go on supporting this part of the project if I don't believe it's safe and, uh, I have concerns for the residents.
Is the crosswalk as it's currently proposed lit?
You mean, is there a new street light going in?
No, 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 sorry. I mean, like, the little flashers on the ground.
No.
Is there any reason we couldn't install that?
Um, the township could install them, um, if, if it was permitted.
Isn't there a rapid flashing beacon there?
No, the rapid flashing beacon was taken out because it was deemed not necessary. You can put in a device called a rapid flashing beacon. Um, Conestoga's a PennDOT road, right? So PennDOT, you'd have to go, you could go through later, a separate process, ask PennDOT if you could put one in. Uh, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't permit it. And, and, and today, as you might know, those beacons are pedestrian or bicycle actuated. So you come into the space, and the flasher goes off, and then when you get through the space, it go, it, it shuts down. So it's not on all the time. So I think, um, that would be sort of a belt and suspenders approach. Certainly, there's nothing wrong with that. It's, uh, it's just, uh, I think we're pricing those at around $75,000 right now.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that if the township ends up losing the funding for the trail, it's going to be real tough for us to get funding from many of those agencies later on for anything else. Um, 'cause my experience has been, they really don't like to be jerked around that way. Um, this might not have been my choice at the time, but I wasn't on the board at the time that we moved forward with this, so we gotta kind of find a way to live with it. If, if there is not an easy way to keep the grants that we have and relocate the, the crosswalk and the entrance into the Preserve, then I think we need to start thinking about how we're going to. And it sounds like you're saying there are mechanisms we can do, like signs for parking, light the crosswalk. We've got a lot of smart people, at least a few of them who are on this board. We could probably come up with some other suggestions.
Absolutely.
So I guess my only question is, um, so the 40,000 for this change order, so that's going to bring us up to over 100,000 for all the change orders, at least if I'm reading the legislative, uh, letter right here. Um, I mean, do we think this is kind of it? Is this going to get us to the end? I mean, are we close? I mean, it's-
Well, I, I, I believe we, we submitted, and I think you got the, the change order request from TPD. Um, and, and, and they listed what happened, all the things that have happened. And I have to say, you know, w- we work with a number of transportation engineering firms. TPD is among the best. As the other change orders happen to survey, storm order management from, uh, Bursage and also AD Marble, that has a ripple effect, as you might imagine, of creating additional coordination and work and changes that ripples through the entire team. Um, so this is the, the, the first change order that TPD has asked for. Uh, if you read their change order, they've, they've expended more than they're asking for. Um, and, um, so to answer your question, is this it? Yes, I think it has to be, number one. Uh, we've asked for a small change order. Uh, we've been coming to meetings like this, which add up, uh, you know? So our change order is relatively small as part of that. We're asking for $5,000. Um, so, uh, I, I, I think it would be very difficult for me to come back, um, and ask for additional change orders at this point. And the other thing I'll mention, the last time I was here, um, which was a month and a half ago, before we submitted the county grant, I wasn't aware that TPD was going to ask for this. I don't check in with them and say, "Are you okay? Do you need more money?" That's not my job. My job is to represent the township. They, they sent that to me like literally a day after that meeting.
Well, congratulations on getting the county grant. That's certainly a-
Thank you.
-quite a, a, a sizable chunk of change.
Did we get all the federal grants? And are we negotiating with the school district for the final piece on 12B from your thing?
Uh, Commissioner Booker, we, as Mr. Simone noted, we did get the approval from PennDOT to do the, uh, to physically negotiate the easement agreements. We decided not to send those letters out until this meeting tonight. Then we will.
Why? Is there some, is there some, uh, issue of contention that we need to discuss?
Uh, we wanted to make sure all was well with the board, with the pla- project. If it is, then we will send out the three letters to the ver- to the three places, the school district, uh, HOA, and move from there.
Yes, I, I, I would, wouldn't see why not, I guess, unless this issue in the sixth ward's going to hold it up, right? Which I, that's separate, isn't it? It's separate. It's not, it's not part of the proposed. If you go back to the map, real quick.
It is, it's all together, Commissioner, because-
Is it all together? All right.
If you don't do the one, as Mr. Simone said, the, the whole project goes off kilter.
The whole, the whole project? Um, so looking at your, um, I'm looking at, um, the new section, that's 7A, 9A, 12D, 12B. It's the central, around the high school.
Yes, sir.
Right. At, when that ends, that ends right there, basically at, um, the Radnor Road.
Radnor Chester and, and King of Prussia Road, right at that intersection.
Right. So the, the purple around the Radnor Corporate Center is 9F. Um, it's upper to the upper-
Yes.
Right. That, that's proposed still, right? We're working, that's one that Steve's working on right now, 9F. So how do you get from the end of 12B either to 9E or to 9F? Do you cut through the train station? Or what connects those two red dots in there?
Yeah, um, it's, it's too small for me to see. I'd have to go back to the master plan, but I certainly would have, be happy to go over that with you. I just can't remember because the master plan was done a while ago.
All right. But it just, it will end at that corner of Radnor Way, or does it go, does it go, it crosses over?
No, it, it stops at the corner of Radnor Chester and King of Prussia Road, right at that intersection, right next to the existing, the old Penn facility.
Right. And so then it would, there'd be a new crosswalk over, or do you use-
Not yet. We're, we're not touching that intersection. We're going up to that intersection. The multipurpose trail goes around the high school, then goes along the Penn facility, and it ends-
Right there at that corner. But right now, there's a crosswalk right there.
Correct, that won't change. That'll still be-
That won't change. But it will not go across the street to Radnor Way?
Not officially, but obviously there's a crosswalk there, so-
But there's no sidewalk. Well, maybe, I, I can't, there is, okay.
There is. It's a safe crossing, and there's a pedestrian crossing.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and all of these projects, um, you know, relatively speaking, this has moved relatively quickly in terms of getting the funding, moving it ahead. These are generational projects that take years, and if subsequent boards of commissioners still like the project, and some may not, it'll go forward or it won't go forward. But, um, that's a decision that, that you and, and others will make as you, as you go forward.
Okay. Any other questions for Peter? All right. Peter, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, uh, Resolution 2019-118, authorizing payment of change order number nine to Simone Collins Landscape Architecture in the amount of $40,000. Uh, may I get a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Okay. Do we need any additional discussion on this here on the board? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Please?
Hi, Kathy Wright, Lenore Avenue, and I'm one of the few people on that street without a driveway, and I'm at the end of the street. Congratulations on your reelection and being our commissioner. You're very fortunate. So, and you're on receipt of those letters that some of our love has, have sent to you. Um, the crossing at Conestoga is above my pay grade, but the ADA, five feet out into Lenore, is very significant with regard to taking away parking spaces. It will create a bottleneck at the end of that street. People who park at the end of that street are the trash trucks that come down the one-way. It's going to create it very tight. It's going to create it very tight. Two cars come down, one goes right, one goes left. That will be very difficult. The representative from Simone told us that when you have an ADA, you have to park significantly far behind that from the legal, and that is going to take at least several parking spaces back from the corner of Lenora. So it's going to impact the residents significantly. And I wonder if there's any way to grab the easements from either one of those corners to not narrow the street into a bottleneck, but to at least kind of go that way into the sidewalks. I don't know anything about easements, but if there's any way to get some of that sidewalk corner on either side, that would be helpful. Otherwise, it's really going to impact the traffic down that street and the parking. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On the change order, is that work already done, or is it not done?
Commissioner Littleboth.
Littleboth?
Finish the project up by half the TPD.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you? Tim Holman. I also live on Lenora Avenue, a little more toward the top of it. I mean, I must say, like, I guess I'm a little fascinated by the statement of the gentleman that you're almost at the finish line here, because like, that's pretty much exactly the opposite of what was said two weeks ago when there was a presentation devoted to this issue. The folks made a big point of saying, "This isn't anywhere near a done deal, and we're not, you know, this is still very much up for discussion." So maybe, I mean, perhaps you gave them bad information. I'm not sure. And so, but, but they made it very clear that this was not at all a done deal, and so it sounds like it is.
I believe that was the statement by the Meliora reps, which was the West Wayne Preserve project, not the trail project.
Okay. Okay. So I guess, all right, well, although, well, fine. Terms of the, you know, this idea of putting, creating a neck down at the end of Lenora Avenue, I don't know how many of you have driven down Lenora Avenue and then tried to enter Conestoga Road, you know, but frankly, to see to your left, you need to get as far right on Lenora Avenue as you can, because you simply, it's, the sightline is very poor there. And so this plan, as I understand it, is going to neck from each side and is going to create, so you're going to have a much more narrow exit onto Conestoga. And so I'm, I'm pretty skeptical about, about this, you know, the idea of how safe this And as I understand it, you know, there had been previously this idea that, well, Lenora Avenue will become part of the trail itself, and then that had been rejected. And so now, what's being proposed is, you'll go to West Wayne, you'll turn right onto Conestoga on your bike, and then you'll come down to Lenora and go left to, through this crosswalk, is I understand how the plan is laid out. And so, you know, again, you know, as someone who lives there, and who frankly, I do not walk on, and I think a lot of people don't, don't walk on Conestoga Road on that sidewalk there, because cars come flying down, especially from the left, but really, they come flying from, from either direction. And so, I mean, you know, my concern is that really what you're, you can tell people, this is what you're going to do. You're going to go to West Wayne, and then you're going to turn right onto Conestoga, and then you'll, you'll make this left. The reality is that, you know, that people will figure out, I think, pretty quickly that that's actually dangerous, like, because if you've, I don't, I don't know that you really, you very seldom see anyone riding a bike on, certainly on that section of Conestoga Road. It's almost, it's unheard of. And so what I think is, that what you're effectively doing is, you are really creating, this is de facto, you're creating that very thing which you've rejected before, is what people will figure out is, oh, no, no. I'm going to come up West Wayne, I'm going to turn on Bloomingdale, and then I'm going to go down Lenora. And so I think that that's really effectively what you're doing here, is that you are creating de facto that very thing which you agreed not to do. So, and that's, you know, that's, and I, you know, I am very concerned about, you can tell me that Pendot says it's safe, although I know that, you know, when we asked, has Pendot studied like how fast people actually travel on that section of Conestoga Road? And the answer that was given at this prior meeting was, no, or not to my knowledge, or I have no information about that. And so, because the speed limit may be 35 there, maybe it's, I believe it's 35. No one goes 35 miles an hour on that stretch of the road, in my experience, at any hour of the day. And so to put this, you know, this crosswalk right there, you know, I happen to believe that it is a very dangerous crosswalk. And you can tell me that Pendot says it's fine, and, and, and so that's, I guess that's, you know, if you're going to go with that, then, then you'll rely on that. And so, but I would be very concerned about crossing that street. And the only safe place to cross it is at the stoplight, which is not very far away. And so, you know, so for all this, you know, I understand it's a very big project, and I'm not really sure that I understand the concept, that if you don't do this little piece of it, that somehow you'll lose the entire grant. I don't believe that. And, you know, but what do I know? Okay? Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right. I will call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-118...
May I ask one quick question? As I understand it, our vote today is on a specific change order. It's not on the issue that we've been addressing in greater detail, which is the crossing at Lenora. So I don't think that we need to scuttle this particular change order in order to continue having this discussion, which I hope will ultimately result in at least some small changes, perhaps larger ones, I don't know. But am I right about that?
Yeah. So it's my understanding this is just for the change order for the $35,000 for TPD, for the list of things that were on the slide, that, you know, have been done and some that haven't. And then to Simone Collins, the $5,000 for the, basically, attendance at all the meetings.
We're not going to vote on this, and then they go out and they put the ADA-complying curbs in and start putting up the crosswalk.
No, I don't see that, no.
And just so I'm clear on the area of concern, it's labeled 8A on this map.
So Commissioners, yes, you're voting on the, the resolution for a change order, but, so as Mr. Simone laid out the schedule, we would, without any direction, other, without direction to the contrary, we will continue to move forward with the project as it is.
Yeah, I think that we probably want to ask, maybe to put something on the meeting, not this following meeting, but the one after that, to look to you guys for some suggestions on how to deal with this. And I can schedule something in between, maybe to talk to the two of you, perhaps. I'm looking at the design for the curb, and I'm wondering whether there's not a way to decrease the bump out. I'd like to have a conversation about the lit crosswalk. I don't know, well, fundamentally, I don't want to spend a lot of time at this meeting. I don't want to spend more time at this meeting.
We will set that up. Well, I think it's probably advisable that we investigate the rapid flashing beacon.
Yeah.
At a minimum, and maybe we can do that before we get, we do get together.
Yeah. And to completely steal somebody else's suggestion, Lisa, maybe we could talk about making the street permit parking or something to deal with the parking issues. That was Lisa's idea. She wrote it down, and I'm stealing it.
Well, don't steal it, it's not a good one.
Oh, I only steal good ones.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, so back to our vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-118, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Was that you, Jake? I'm sorry. Okay. Motion passes six to one. All right. Resolution 2019-111, authorization, authorizing distribution of funds from the Stormwater Fund. This is a continuation from our last meeting. Commissioner Larkin.
It is. Steve McNellis was going to talk to us about this, but I understand he can't be here today. Is there anyone else who can, or should we just move this on to another meeting?
If it would be possible to move to the next meeting, Steve is due to return this Friday.
Sure.
So if we could, that'd be great.
Fine by me. Thanks.
So do we need a motion to table?
Yeah, probably. I'll move to table.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion around tabling? All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to one with Commissioner Abel, or six, nothing, thank you, with Commissioner Abel off the dais. Ordinance 2019-10, Medical Office Parking Adoption, Amending Chapter 280 of the Radnor Township Code, Zoning Ordinance by Amending Regulations to Provide Minimum Standards for Off-Street Parking for General Processional and Medical Office Uses. Mr. Rice.
Thank you. This is a amendment to the PLO parking provisions, which has been discussed off and on for a couple of years. What you have in front of you is the changes primarily adding additional parking requirements for medical and dental offices. Currently, you have one standard for any type of office building in the PLO. This adds additional requirements for parking for medical and dental offices. We've also amended the section that dealt with offices in order to pull this out, but this is something the Planning Commission talked about over the course of a couple of years, when Penn Medicine was coming through. So that's all this is doing. This has been advertised twice in the Delaware County Times on October 28th and November 4th for a public hearing tonight. We've received all the recommendations from the county and the Township Planning Commission. So unless the board has some questions, this is, this is ready to go.
Okay. May I get a motion to approve Ordinance 2019-10?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All righty. Is there any Commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? So I just had a quick question around the, the information from the Delaware County Planning So in their, so they reviewed this, it looks like in October initially, and then it went back to our planning, then it went back to Delaware County planning?
Yes.
So they're seeing, and so our planning, it looks like they recommended, drive-in banking facilities shall have stacking for four cars, but then I see Del, is, is the Planning Commission, Delaware County Planning, are they recommending 12? Is that different? Is it more, like...
You're looking at the October 17th?
No, I'm looking at the, so the last letters from planning, June 20th, 2019? Is that before? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My bad. I'm out of order. Okay.
Yeah, the county's letter was October 17th, 2019.
Yeah, the most recent.
And they were...
Okay, so they adopted what our Planning Commission said. I'm sorry, I was reading in the wrong direction. Okay. Okay. I'm good. Does anyone else have any questions? All right. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All right. I will call the vote. All those in favor of Ordinance 2019-10, Medical Office Parking Adoption, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes four to three. All right. Reports of standing committees of the board. Do we have any? I don't think so. Anyone? Library? Public health? Okay. Any new business?
New business? I don't believe the board can accept a check for $250,000 from Penn without a separate approval. So I would think that you should put that on the agenda to accept that contribution.
Mr. Rice.
You can accept it the way you did it tonight. There's no...
We didn't, we didn't accept it. There's no, that's not in the resolution. There's no, there's no mention of $250,000 from a developer being gifted to the township. It needs a separate approval.
I'm just going to go out on a limb and say, the township is happy to take money from people who want to give us money. We don't need to freight it up with a whole lot of additional pomp and nothingness.
Well, it could be a conflict, it could be...
Giving us money, not a conflict.
It could be, it could be for any reason. It could be nefarious or improper, so it should have a separate vote. We don't, we don't know where, where, and, you know, there was, it was funny, because there was no discussion at all of this happening, so it wasn't like there was a kind of discussion with the board. It was just, it wasn't even on the agenda. So it's an improper gift without being accepted expressly by the board.
We can't have a vote every time we accept money from people. We accept a lot of money from a lot of different people.
Yeah. When you expect, accept $250,000 from someone developing a site, you should take a separate vote on it, as you should.
Well, that's just not how it works.
And Penn's given us money before, I believe, and...
Penn has not given money before. Penn has not come to a presentation and given a check for $250,000 ever.
So thank you.
Penn is, Penn is a developer, and without, without, you can't, you can't accept that without a separate vote.
I think you're, yes, I would say that's your opinion, and we are thankful, and we thank Penn greatly for the donation of $250,000 to the township, especially at a time when we're talking about...
Is it a donation, or what did it buy? And what, what's, what's the, is there an agreement with this?
It's improvements for the park.
There's, it's, so how do we decide it was, was going to go to improvement towards the park? We didn't, that's not been a vote. That wasn't taken. It wasn't in the resolution.
It's in the meeting minutes, what, what it was...
It's not in the meeting minutes. It's, it's nowhere in the meeting minutes. It was a separate thing.
The secretary says it's in the meeting minutes.
It's in the meeting minutes, that it was given at the same time we agreed to change the name of the park and to, to certain, I don't even know what we agreed on, what it is these improvements are going to be. I remember a presentation some years ago, perhaps that's what it is. Nonetheless, it's improper to accept a large gift without explicit instruction and direction from the Board of Commissioners.
Is there consensus on the board that this was an improper gift? That we should not accept it?
Absolutely, it was improper. It needs to be specifically...
I do not hear consensus on the board.
There's no, there's, there's been no direction on what to use that money for. There's been no explicit acceptance of that gift.
Mr. Zinkowski, will you be able to provide for us at the next meeting, what you, what we'll be specifically doing with that money? I know that you guys have, have a very good idea of what you'll be doing and the improvements you want to make to that park with the money that Penn has so generously donated.
Sure. It'll be working to, one is the plinth will actually get out of Philadelphia that's been sitting down there that has mold and everything else will be used as a centerpiece here, and all of those dollars will be used in that area in partnership with our veterans groups who will be working with this, as well as community groups and organizations. So there, I, you know, nefarious way of that, I'm not sure what that even means.
All right. So I do not hear consensus on the board that we need to vote on it.
It's not a matter of consensus. It's a matter of charter and of law, that you can't, can't accept that without, there's, there was no acceptance of that gift anywhere by this Board of Commissioners. It's improper.
Okay. We hear you duly noted. Thank you. Any other new business? All right. Any old business? I think we dealt with the old business that you wanted to deal with before, so I think we're good there. Any, anyone else? All right. Public participation.
Sarah Pillings, 29 Garrett Avenue. I'm wearing my advisor to the Green Team hat. First, I want you to know, we did not ask the high schoolers to come to the meeting tonight. They contacted us and said, "May we come? We feel this is very important." So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I have heard that one or more members of this board is wondering why the Green Team isn't doing all of getting ready for the 21st century, 2030 and 2050, themselves as volunteers, and I wanted to speak to that. So I want to remind you a little bit about what the Ready for 100 program is. It's a Sierra Club initiated, initiated campaign, which seeks to enlist communities all across the country to embrace a vision for a healthier community, committed to transitioning to 100% clean, renewable, affordable energy. Community members come together to call on local elected officials, that's you, to make the commitment and to initiate a planning process for transforming the community's electricity, transportation, heating, and cooling, and other energy uses to, to affordable energy. So why have this planner and pay them the very little bit of money that they're asking for? The planner has the analytical skills and the experience to assess the energy market dynamics, governmental, and policy context. They have the expertise to analyze the local economic factors and emerging opportunities and challenges specifically for Radnor. This is not a cookie cutter deal. The planner will bring the technical capability to guide the development of a long-term energy transition plan that is particularly tailored to the conditions here and advantageous for the Radnor community, the residents, the institutions, the commercial, and the corporate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other public comment this evening? Good evening.
I'm Claire Garten, I live at 231 Lenore Avenue, and I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I sat through this wonderful meeting, and I just had one thought to, and a question. On the grant from Penn Medicine, I sit on Parks and Rec Board, I sit on Shade Tree, and I also sit on the WBA Board, and that was brought up to our attention on Parks and Rec, that that grant money was possible. I don't think there was an amount, and I'm just kind of curious, I'm delighted, I mean, who doesn't want $250,000 to put into our community? But there is some question as, why? Why did, did Penn Medicine come and say, "We just want to infuse this money into our community," or did we, as a township, go out to Penn Medicine and say, was it the veterans? I mean, I'm not sure where the idea came from.
Sure, I'll be able to answer that.
Very good question.
That's myself.
Okay.
That's myself. I've been talking with them, as well as a lot of other big organizations, of how we can try to raise money. Previously, we had some previous donors that would like to, but there were some that said, that got to those donors and said, "We'd rather have you direct those funds to political campaigns instead of to the township." This has been one that had been worked on for a long time. Securing that kind of money is significant to help get this project going. Also, the state, we can't leave them out, they provided $25,000 as well towards this project. Again, you never know until somebody comes with a check of what actually they're going to provide. It was great to see that we got $25,000 from the state. Our initial idea was 10,000 was coming, so that was great, and it's, actually, you see people do that. However, if you do your research on these organizations, they sponsor specifically, in their wheelhouse, is veterans and first responders. So it kind of matched up with that very well, and for us to get this project going. So, I'm the person that I've been trying to get a lot of people interested in trying to support this park and this project, so that's with me, and it was great, because, again, with first responders being added to that, it significantly helped us there.
I think that's an excellent answer. I just didn't have that information, and even on Parks and Rec Board, we didn't, we didn't, hadn't heard that, it was new, brand new to us. So I think, as I work on these boards, and I, as I've said to you many times, you guys have the hard job, you have to make these decisions, all of you together, and I appreciate it, and we live in a marvelous community, as we all agree, and aren't we lucky to have these problems? Where to put $250,000, awesome. Bob, I think that's an excellent answer, thank you.
Sure.
But that communication and that story, we didn't, we didn't know.
Right.
I mean, you, you're, you're the manager, so there's lots of great things that you do that we don't really even know are happening.
And some of those are just, you just don't know, because we've had people in the past that we thought we had, just like we had a significant, they were considering making a significant donation towards the interchange, and about $2 million to help improve the gateway to the township, but we lost that because of certain circumstances.
So all these projects, excellent, and on that same thought, Tap, the Tap Grant, you know, where we are with that, I really appreciate Jack looking into it a little bit more, for just some other extra things to, I live on that street, it's not a bad thing to have trails and lovely things, trails are like water, the people will go where, you know, on a college campus, we have a path where there's no sidewalk, it's because kids are going where, where they want to go. That will happen, that's fine, as long as we can try to do the best we can to keep people safe. Thanks.
And Bob, on the, the park, certainly, I know, I'm sure Tammy will be overseeing that, the, the project there and what will be happening, and that will come through the Parks and Rec?
Parks Board will, will see that, as well as, our hope is that, and not put you on the spot, but to be involved with actually helping to put this together, because there's already some contractors that do a lot of work for veterans and that, in partnering with our veterans organization. This could be a real project where community is involved to get this, get this done.
Well, Bob, since you answered it that way, let, let me just have a hypothetical. Imagine if a developer who's working on a project who's not complete, who has inspections and approvals and permits and occupancy permits to get, makes a donation out of the blue, some people might say that perhaps, that that was to influence future actions by the township, and there would be no way to refute that, would there?
Absolutely, that's your thinking, that's not our thinking.
It's anybody, it's hypothetical, Bob, anybody could think that, and.
Okay, we're not going to argue, we're not going to argue about the hypotheticals. At 9:35 in the evening, please.
The issue, the issue is, a developer just comes in and hands a check for $250,000, so people would rightly be concerned, well, who asked for that? Where did it come from? What's it for? And how do we know what, what it's going to go to, and whether this, it has any influence on future actions?
And so I think all that's been answered at this point.
None of it's been answered.
Mr. Zankowski?
Sure.
I mean, unless you have anything else to add, I feel like you, you've answered those questions, so.
Just, just a final comment is, Commissioner Booker's one that's been asking us, we should be getting more from developers when they come in, so this is one that, they've gotten all their approvals, they have moved through, so it, it's great to see this partnership with them. This is a very big institution within the Philadelphia, as well as national areas of their expertise, and for them to look favorably upon a project that honors and recognizes veterans and first responders, it's, it's tremendous, it really is.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to.
They still need a.
I'm going to entertain a motion.
A permit, an occupancy permit, don't they?
I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, have a good evening.